Welcome to the March 5, 2019 Board of Commissioner meetings. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers if you need them, right on the shelves. First we'll do a moment of silence for reflection and then pledge of allegiance led by Gary Drews.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gary. Next we'll have the review and approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next we'll have Ms. Holly Hennies with the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of February 19, 2019. Number six is to appoint Mr. Paul Paulson to the Weed and Pest Board for a three-year term representing Area 3. And number seven is to accept the recommendation for appointment of Mr. William Podraski to the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission for a term of five years.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? If not, at this time, is there any Commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to remove number seven.
Number seven, and I'd like number six, if that's okay. So we need approval of number five, if we could. Commission?
For approval of number five on the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect to approve number five. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number six? If we could have Mr. Goffey come up? And your name, sir?
Good morning, Scott Goffey, Pennington County Natural Resources Director.
Go ahead.
I would just say that Paul Paulson does a great job of representing that area. Area 3 is the eastern third of Pennington County, the Wall area down in Scenic. Very well-respected producer in the area. He brings, as a farm and, both a farm and ranch producer, he brings that perspective to the weed board. Generally, we don't get a lot of applicants for the weed board. Paul's been on there since 2004, so it's kind of a lifetime appointment until they're ready to get off, and then we have to recruit somebody. So he does a great job, kind of a thankless job, much as being a Commissioner. But they do, the weed board does serve an important role in the county. As is a requirement of all counties to have a weed and pest board, they just ensure that our agricultural lands are being protected, so.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson, will you come up, please? You've had a lifetime on our weed board sort, Weed and Pest Board, and we appreciate everything you do, and we thought, for your service, we'd bring you up today and have Scott say a few words, because we do appreciate a person that wants to help us out in the county and especially on this board. And I know Scott is wonderful to work for, so, or work with. So, any words today, sir?
Well, just, I really enjoy it.
We thank you for your service, sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
On number six, and a second from Mr. Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Drews?
As with Paul, appreciate what, that his service, but we have a lot of boards and commissions that are operated primarily by volunteers, and we appreciate the fact that they're willing to step forward, give us their talents for those services. And this one here happens to be Bill Poteraski that's stepped forward relative to the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and we appreciate that, appreciate that he's willing to step forward and do that. Also want to thank J.D. Dunafin, who's put 20 years in on that board, and Bill will replacing her on that, on that board. But we appreciate all the people that are willing to step up and, and commit their time and dedication to those things, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. Commissioner Drews, any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I guess, I just want to echo what Mr. Drews has said. We welcome Bill on the board now, and just to piggyback on the recognition of JP of all the service that she did, 20 years, it's, that's a lot of commitment and the work that she did, and looking forward to having Bill on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Move for approval of number seven?
Moved by DeSanto for number seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next we're on regular agenda items, eight through 17. Number eight is presentation of Adopt a Highway program certificates of appreciation. Ms. Connie Birlato. Morning.
Morning, Commissioner. Connie Birlato, Office Manager at the Highway Department. And I have Joe Miller.
Joe Miller, Highway Superintendent.
We're here this morning to recognize our Adopt a Highway participants. In 2018, we had 53 organizations participate, and they did just over 116 miles of roads, so we're just here to recognize them. They were all invited to come to the meeting this morning. We just have a small group of them that was able to be here today, so I'm gonna, I would like to hand them certificates.
Thank you, Ms. Connie, and Mr. Joe?
So first I have the 28 AMXS. Thank you. Next we have 28 CPTS. Thank you. 28th Logistics Readiness Squadron. Air Force Sergeants Association. Thank you. Domestics Bicycle Club. Hargans Family. Norris Peak Subdivision.
Hello.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Phi Eta Sigma, South Dakota School of Mines and Technology. And the next one, if I murder this, I'm very sorry. RCC Mitakwea Oyasin. How did I do? Terrible? Thank you so much. South Dakota Internal Order of Police Lodge 2. SDS M&amp;T Student Members of the American Chemical Society. Western Dakota Insurers. Thank you. And WL Plastics. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Are you done, Ms. Connie?
I am. I just wanted to say we do have a few roads up, available for adoption. Those roads are on our website, and there's a map on there as well if you want to kind of get an idea of where those are located, so those are available on the highways website.
Thank you, Ms. Connie. Thank you, Joe. Commissioner LaCroy, please.
I would just like to have all the volunteers come up front and we take pictures with them. I think the work that they do is outstanding, and we need to show some appreciation. I didn't mean to interrupt, because you're going to get an applause standing there.
I appreciate that. Commissioner LaCroy and the Commission would request if everybody that was on the Adopt a Highway come up front to take a picture with us. We appreciate everything you do. I've been on those crews before, and it actually is a lot of fun, but it's a lot of work that, and volunteer work, that we don't have to do as a county. So, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna have to really squeeze in together. Maybe even two rows, if possible.
Miss, you're gonna be at the back.
All in back.
Ladies, if you'd like to go up front, that would be cool.
All right, everybody. Can you see? I can't see Mr. Ross.
Got it.
All right, thank you.
All right. Now we're on number nine, isolated track. Mr. Robert L. and Ms. Barbara Steele, continued from 11/2018. First, if we could, Ms. Holly, could you give us some background information? This has been going on for a while, and we want to make sure all the Commission is informed.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. This has been in front of the Board many times over the last, I believe, two years. Ms. Steele has returned and asked, or stated that she is unable to negotiate with any of the surrounding landowners to gain access to her property. This property is located out off of Bradsky Road, and the next step in the process is for the Board of Commissioners to serve notice upon owners or such owners of land in writing of such a time that the Board will visit the land, to lay out one right-of-way across such surrounding lands and assess damages therefor. So, like I say, the next step in this process is for the Commissioners to actually go out and view the property and determine which route they feel is best to provide access to Ms. Steele for her land. The Board did declare the land as isolated back on September 4, 2018. In your packet, the complete history and proposed routes is in there for the new Commissioners to review. So, at this point, I had suggested April 3 or April 10. It is my understanding that I do have one Commissioner gone on April 3, so we could go April 10 or even into May if, if that works better for this Board's schedule.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto?
Would, I mean, April 10 could work for me. Would April 11 work for?
I think you go with the conversation hearing.
Oh, okay.
Let's, if that's okay, Commissioner DeSanto, let's have Ms. Steele up front and kind of give us some history and what she thinks, and then we'll go into dates and motions. That's okay, sir? Okay. Ms. Steele? Do we have a picture of the land that we can put up there, Ms. Holly? So when she's explaining, she can kind of tell us who she visited and kind of what's going on with some of the accesses when she visited with people, and...
Yep, maybe just a moment here.
Thank you, Ms. Steele.
I love the colored one that has the three. No, I think probably that other one would be better. That one, probably.
Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Barbara Steele? Okay. I'm here today to ask the Commissioners to determine which of the three routes would be best for us to access our property, which is determined to be an isolated track at meeting in September of 2018. Route 1 would be a section line road of 1,659 feet with another 512 feet across the Wardell property. I've talked to Lynn Gray about this access, and he is all for it, as it would get access, to the two properties that Wardell's now own and do not have any access to them. Wardell's have given the authority to talk for them to Mr. Gray. I talked to Mrs. Wardell on February 23, 2019, and she said Mr. Gray has the authority to talk for them. Cost would be prohibitive for us to build both a section line and a driveway to our property. No one has come forward wanting to help us get access to their property. Let me see. Nobody has come to us wanting to go in with us on getting access to our property. Route 3 is on the Comaford property, which already has an existing driveway and would only take some new dirt work to extend the driveway, but it does not stay close to the property line, and there is an issue with the dam. There are improvements on this property. We have talked to Mr. Comaford, and he's not interested in giving access and would like to buy our property. We are not interested in selling, as our son would like to build a single-family home on the property. Route 2 of the three routes, this is the shortest, of 1,366 feet, and it would be through the Newton LLC Shelby Burris on the south side of the Newton property, and then into the corner of the Wardell property. There is already a 50-foot easement on the south edge of the Newton LLC Burris property, and then turns north to the 50 acres on the north side of the section line. This easement would come to the corner of our property. Mr. Gray owns the property to the east of the 50 acres, and he comes in on an existing section line road. We have a small easement from Bradsky Road for ingress, egress, and to install and maintain utilities on this easement. Our property is listed on the Bradsky Road District, and we pay taxes to the Road District. There are no improvements on the Newton Burris or the Wardell property. We have talked to Shelby Burris, and he's only interested in selling, but would not give us a price, and hasn't wanted to meet with us, so we could work something out. Mr. Gray, at one of the last meetings, said he had no problem with accessing the small corner of the Wardell property and using the easement. We have determined that this would be the best route for us. If this route would be granted, we would be responsible for the whole expense of this driveway of 1,366 feet, and we would respectfully be asking at a later date for a waiver to the Ordnance 14, so we could build a driveway to access our property. In closing, I did talk to Mr. Wardell just the other night, and he said that he wouldn't have a problem with using this access.
Thank you. Anything else, ma'am?
No, I think that's it.
Any questions, Board, for Ms. Steele? Commissioner Ross Connect?
Yes, same, ma'am. On option one, when I was reading through my notes, did someone from the Pennington County Highway Department go out there and look at the topography along that section line?
Yes, they did.
And what was their conclusion?
Well, it's got a big gully there. I don't really know what their conclusion was.
It's my understanding that it's not that bad. It could be developed. And if I look at the state statutes, it appears to me that when possible, that you should, if you're landlocked, that you should try to use an existing section line right-of-way, which would, looks to me like, the total length of that route is about 1,659 feet.
But we don't abut the section line. We're 500 feet away.
Right, and then when you get to that point, then I'm sure there's some other South Dakota codified laws that would allow you to go south between Wardell and Newton to, to get to your property. If the, if the two owners that have an option 2, if they come to an agreement, then I guess, you know, that would seem like a logical choice, but if they don't come to an agreement, it's my opinion that you'd have to use that, you're, you'd probably be forced to use some of that section line right-of-way, if I read it right.
Madam Chairman, Jay Aldrin with State's Attorney's Office. In, in the chapter, the code dealing with this topic, there's two statutes that reference section line. The first statute references it on the issue of whether you're isolated or not, and it says if you abut a section, if your property...
Jay, not to start, stop you, but what, can you tell us the statute, so we can look it up, too? Thank you, Jay.
31-22-1, which is the very first section in the chapter.
Thank you, sir.
Says, "A tract of land adjoining a section line right-of-way for at least 66 feet is not isolated if a passable road can be built within the adjoining section line to connect to a passable public highway." So, Ms. Steele's comment was their property doesn't abut, and, but you have found that she's isolated anyway for other reasons. But if you abutted a section line for 66 feet, the statute says you're not isolated, but that's not her circumstance. The circumstance now that Commissioner Ross Connect is speaking to would be...
31223?
Yes. 3122-3, where it says, now this is a whole separate reference to the use of section lines. "Wherever it is practicable to do so, such board shall lay such right-of-way along a section line or the line of a government fractional subdivision of a section." So the point being is that there is a directive in statute that where it's practicable to do so, and maybe that's depending on terrain, costs, so forth, you are to look to section lines as a route. So, obviously, you got to start there, and you could finish there if you believe it is practicable to do so, and of course, they don't give any guidance on what the word "practicable" means. That's, that's fairly typical. So, you are correct, Commissioner Ross Connect, in that section lines are definitely a priority if they're available and it's practicable to build within them to provide access.
Commissioner Ron Ross Connect, do you have a follow-up?
Well, as I said, that, if I read the statutes correct, that would be, option one would seem to be, on a legal basis, probably the first option. I'm not going to say it's going to be the least expensive, but I don't know that we're looking for the least expensive option up here. We're looking for the, what's legal, that is legally permissible. So, my, my experience would tell me option one. Now, if you could get the owners of option 2 to agree, then by all means, I would say that would, it's a one-win situation for you and them, because you'd probably reimburse them something for that easement.
Well, sure. I have...
It's already, it's already existing, so... But you're saying that...
Well, it would be very expensive to build a section line road for me, just myself. Nobody else is going to help me, plus another 500 feet. It just wouldn't be possible for us to afford to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. At this point, guys, I think we're looking at going to look at the property first, and then we can talk more on which option that we believe is more, you know, the one to go with. So, at this point, if, what we're looking for is dates to go out and look at it, the property, Ms. Steele's property. Do we have, I know Commissioner DeSanto said April 11. What would that be, Ms. Holly?
April 11 should be okay.
Could you tell us the day?
I think the weather was supposed to turn bad. Wasn't that, like, forecasted rain for April 11 on your sheet? There's, there's an extra page in your packet.
Yeah, it does say...
I think that's why I didn't go that day.
Ms. Holly, I think the weather has been bad. I don't think that's a requirement anymore.
It's 62 degrees and spotty afternoon showers.
Okay, guys, so, let's, thank you, Ms. Holly.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Let's keep in mind that this is South Dakota.
Yeah.
And maybe you want to go into May. I mean, that's, that's a choice of the Board.
Okay, so...
I can't make 11.
Okay, no 11th. Can we do two different, two different days? I mean, can we do it that way?
I can make it on the 10th, if everybody else can.
Okay, then we can do two different days, can't we, Ms. Holly, for two different Boards?
I really think for staff time and resources, we should get everybody out there in one shot, so everybody's hearing the same thing at the same time.
What day is the 10th?
Is a Wednesday.
Okay, I'm good on a Wednesday. Mr. LaCroy, how about you? Commissioner LaCroy? Good? Ross Connect, Wednesday, the 10th?
That'll work.
Sir? Commissioner Drews?
Yes.
Okay, and what time do we have, Ms. Holly?
I said 8:30 in the morning.
Everybody okay? 8:30 in the morning on April 10?
Unless I have a plane malfunction.
You should be back.
We'll call you when we're out there. I'm kidding. So, do we have a motion?
Bear with me just a second, Deb.
We do?
Okay, do we have a motion?
You're looking.
We're looking for one.
I'll make the motion.
For April 10, a look at the isolated track at 8:30. Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto?
Would it be possible to make it 10 o'clock? 10 a.m.?
Would you like to change that, Commissioner Drews?
That's not going to make a lot of difference.
I'll be driving back from Denver and getting home at about 3:00 in the morning, so...
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second for...
Motion by Drews, second by LaCroy. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Sir? Come on in.
My name's Lynn Gray, and I'm representing the Werdels on this deal.
Yes, sir.
And I just wanted to make a little comment and a little bit of history on this. The option 2, that right-of-way?
Yes.
That actually is issued to the owners of the property, which would be Werdell's. And the Kent family that originally owned that established that easement, so that if they sold it in the future, that easement would go with the property owners, and that was what that was for. And so, Mrs. Steele, we discussed this, and I discussed it with Mr. and Mrs. Werdell, and they have no problem using that easement, because they actually, they're the ones that own that easement, and they have a right to that easement. And on the easement, it says for ingress, egress, and utilities. So that means that they can build a road and also put all the utilities in on that easement, and that's why it was established. So, just in case nobody knew, I thought I'd bring that up and just a little bit of history. And like she said, and I reiterate, I have no problem with them using that, and that's a lot less money, because on the section line, the county went out and looked at that and gave an estimate, and of course, on the section line, the county and the Commissioners are requiring to have it built according to county specs, which is way different than building a driveway.
I believe that's Ordnance 14.
Yeah. And so, I understand why Mrs. Steele wants to use option 2, because probably costs are less than half the price of what it would cost to build a road up to county specs.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Yep.
Is there anyone else that would like to give some history on this before we go out? Mr. Comaford, would you like to speak today? Mr. Cumberford, would you like to speak today, or? If you'd like to come up, sir. I know, but.
Anyway, I'm Frank Cumberford. I own, my daughter and I own some of the property that Mrs. Steele wanted a right of way. I don't have any intention of trying to keep her out, but I don't want to split my daughter's property into three pieces for an eternal easement.
Okay.
But one that Mr. Gray was talking about, there's an easement already there that I believe touches the Steele's property. Is that correct, Mrs. Steele?
Hold on, guys, just, yep.
So it would seem that that would be the easiest for everybody.
Okay, we're going to look at that, and I appreciate you coming up, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good day, sir. Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Did we already vote on that?
Nope.
We did?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner, Ross Connect, do you have a follow-up?
Just one question on that, option two. Is there a, an existing trail or road or driveway going east and west on option two?
Up front, Ms. Steele, please. Thank you.
There is a little bit of a driveway of going up there. I don't know how many feet, maybe five hundred feet.
So if.
There was a house on that property at one time, and they did have a driveway, but it didn't go all the way up to our property.
But if we were to go with option two hypothetically, would you be responsible for putting a road in there to meet that county ordinance, number fourteen, I believe it was?
I have asked that it would be waived, but I guess because it's public, I don't know. I'm not.
Well, at this point, Commissioner Ross Connect, she can do a variance and other things if that, if that becomes our option.
I just thought it'd help to have some background on this before we go out so we don't have to ask these questions when we get out there.
Well, hopefully the landowners can answer some of that, and PJ will be with us, one of PJ or Brittany or one of the planning staff. So a lot of the people that were going to be asking questions that can answer will be with us, if I'm correct, Ms. Holly?
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross Connect, Commissioner. Thank you, Ms. Steele. Next is items from the sheriff's school liaison for Wall School. I thought you said we did, sorry. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number ten is school liaison for Wall School District. Sheriff Tom, please.
Good morning. Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff, and I have the superintendent from the Wall School District. I'll let him introduce himself as well.
Hi, Dan Baldwin, Superintendent of Wall Schools.
And Superintendent Baldwin had worked with us for many years at Douglas School District, thirteen, fourteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen years, so he's familiar with the school resource, school liaison program. We had a meeting on February twenty-second, I think it was, with the city of Wall and the school. Superintendent was there, one of the school board members, the mayor was there, city council member. And they were all in agreement that they would like to move forward with adding this position to Wall.
Point of privilege, please. Ms. Steele, Mr. Cumberford. If you could step out of the room while you're visiting, thank you. Sorry. Thank you for doing that. Mr. Tom, please.
Thank you. The, there was consensus at that meeting that, again, this would be a jointly funded position with the city and the county and the school district, so it's funded three ways, if you will. And like all the school resource positions, like I've said other times when this has come up, it works well in our business model, so to speak. When we're busy in the summertime with the rally, the fair, tourism, we get our school resource officers back on the street to help with that additional workload during the summer. And of course, just the benefits of having people in the schools, law enforcement in the schools, we've talked about many times. We're in a number of schools, you know, throughout the county. Yeah, it's, it's a good model. It's worked for a lot of years. All we're asking for today is the FTE, not asking for any additional funding. Any funding that's incurred this year, we would absorb within the sheriff's office budget for our piece. But there is a, a cost going forward into 2020 of about forty thousand dollars for the county's commitment, so that, I guess, needs to be taken into consideration. And there's one outstanding question that the superintendent talked about. There's twenty-five thousand for one-time equipment in here. We overlooked that in terms of discussion with the city and the county and getting approval from the actual school board for that expenditure. That's something he'll take back to a subsequent meeting if we agree to move forward here. So if there is a motion to authorize the FTE, I'd make a contingent on the additional funding from the school. But with that, I'm going to hand it over to the superintendent, let him say a few words.
Superintendent.
Yes, thank you. This wonderful opportunity, as a fifteen-year veteran of Douglas Schools, I, I'm well-versed in the liaison officers and the benefits they've had, and you've seen the increase they've needed at Douglas. And we think it's important to take that step at Wall School. With a sharing of the city, it's a, it's a great opportunity to benefit the whole community. And we would follow a similar model of the other schools where the liaison works during school days and determine their hours and so forth. But overall, what I, what I've liked about it, and didn't have a chance to do that very much at Douglas, which I think we can at Wall, is, is proactive opportunities. Dare programs and getting in the classrooms and getting to know that person and, and some social work opportunities with, you know, getting into homes and things where, where it's needed for transparency and things. And I've, I'd be very excited to take this opportunity to work with liaison like I have done at Douglas.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may offer one more comment to. You know, the, the mayor had engaged with us before this discussion came up about some additional coverage in Wall. They wanted more law enforcement presence, more coverage, you know, throughout the week. And so we had that discussion first, and then this partnership with the school district came up, which really helped turn into a win-win for the city and for the school district so we could meet some additional hours that Wall was looking for, plus we get a school liaison officer in the school district. So for that, we'll stand for any questions.
Discussion, Commissioner DeSanto.
I'd just like to thank Sheriff Tom and the superintendent and the city of Wall for getting together and working this out so that it's a joint group effort to, to put this together and to fund it as well, and I appreciate your work.
Thank you. Commissioner Ron Ross Connect.
Kevin, so nine months this officer working the school district, and then three months just being the Wall area.
That's correct. But what it also does is it gives us an additional body in the Wall area. So if there's something happened, it's one more person that's available for call-out after hours as well.
I'm not familiar with Wall, but, you know, like Hill City, is there an office for the sheriff somewhere in Wall?
Yes, there is, right across from Wall Drug on Main Street, right by Kitty Corner.
That was my question.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd make the motion to add one FTE to the sheriff's office budget with the condition that you get approval of the school board for their share of the vehicle.
Second.
Motion by LaCroy, second by DeSanto. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number eleven is a request for a refund of vehicle title transfer fee. Mr. Andrew Shears. Commissioner, Ms. Holly?
Commissioners, I just wanted to let you know that this one was received through the mail, and Mr. Shear has indicated that he will not be here in person to present this. I gave him the option to also appear on the phone, and he did not respond to that. So we don't have the individual here to actually present the request to you.
Can Ms. Janet maybe come up and give us some background, if that'd be okay, Ms. Janet?
Good morning, Commissioners. Janet Saylor, Pennington County Treasurer. You are in possession of my letter by submission for your agenda item. While we were looking into this subject further after my letter was submitted to the board, I would like to further clarify and add to the, to the discussion through the previous resolution from 2012. It does appear to single out property owners from the twenty-five dollars admin fee as Mr. Shear charges. It is certainly not our intentions to do so, and I do feel this can be rectified by a resolution that further clarifies which exact transactions we are trying to address here. The 2002 resolution does state, does not charge the fee to Pennington County property owners. But let me explain that further. The vast majority of property owners, if not all, who purchase a vehicle from out of state at the time the 2012 resolution was written, had their title work mailed to us. Then they arrived in our office to actually complete the titling process once they got back into town. We would not consider those out-of-state transactions, and they would not be assessed the twenty-five dollar administration fee. I still agree with this. However, I do see where there needs to be a change to the 2012 resolution wording to clarify the exact transactions we are targeting for this administration fee. In this scenario, they are not charged the fee because it is not completed from out of state. Face-to-face completion in our office extremely expedites the entire process, whether they own property here or not. Though it is absolutely was our intent to follow the 2012 resolution as written, I admit that there have been incidences where the twenty-five dollar fee for the same service Mr. Shear conducted with us from out of state were not charged when they should have been. These would be extremely, extremely rare cases where a property owner would purchase a vehicle when they are out of state and request plates and title work to be mailed to them at an out-of-state address while they were temporarily away from Rapid City. This was our oversight, and to the commission, I apologize for that. Moving forward with the influx of in, in out-of-state transactions, we will be reviewing this within my office and be sure complete fees are being assessed accordingly from here on out. Clarification in the current proposed resolution wording will resolve further issues, I believe, for the public and for the staff as well. I do agree an out-of-state title transaction is an out-of-state title transaction. To be equal and fair, we should be assessing the same fee on those specific transactions to everyone that requires our services in dealing from out of state. All require the same additional staff time and resources, and I have requested the administration fee for. I stand firm that these specific initial motor vehicle title services should be assessed with the additional administration fee for the county and hope that you will agree. For instance, people from Wall, we have a Wall Satellite Office. Those people come into that office so that they are not considered out of state. They would not be charged a twenty-five dollars. If you have your paperwork mailed to our office and you come up here, we're not going to charge you twenty-five dollars. As I indicated in the letter that I sent to you, we are not discriminating against anyone. We have a company that processes people, a mailbox, a business. They come to the window, they bring the paperwork to us, and they stand there and they process it. All the questions that are asked are asked of them. If there's a problem with the title, we send the title back to them. It's up to them to get the correct paperwork and bring it back to our office for submission. They would not be charged. I have listed some of the things that happen in our office when paperwork is sent in for a title transfer out of state. It's quite a lengthy process. Anything that comes in through the mail, first of all, all our mail is sorted. Title transfers, lien fees, everything goes into a different basket for real estate. We have a part-time employee who comes in and opens the mail because of the bulk of mail that comes into our office. Ninety-eight percent of the mail is title transfers from out-of-state people. We have been keeping track since November. On a calendar, January second through February twenty-eighth, we received eleven hundred title transfers in the mail, and ninety-eight percent of them belong to people that don't even live in the state of South Dakota. Clerks retrieve the title from the inbox in the order that it was received, and they have to go through every piece of paperwork to make sure that we have everything that we need. All the information is then logged into our title application file in the computer. What documents we received, the vehicle, the make, the model, the serial numbers, emails, phone numbers. If there's a check, if there's not a check, everything is checked off. From that point, there's a piece of paper put on the front of that title application, and it is taken to a filing cabinet and put in there in alphabetical order. It is then held in the filing cabinet until the people call or until they come up and say that they are here to, to process their title. After forty-five days, we have to keep track of that because titles have to be mailed back to the owners or to the lien holders if they're not processed within forty-five days. Once someone calls into the office and says, I want to do my paperwork, this is my name, the clerk then has to get up, go to the filing cabinet, come back, put all the paperwork on the desk, go through it all again, even though they've contacted them and told them they need certain things. Most of the time, everything is not there. Then it has to be put into the motor V system at that time, and it all starts over again. There's still things that we don't have on the title work, such as how many wheels a vehicle has, what color it is, gas, diesel, flex fuel. That all has to be answered on the phone. Then we go to the process of most of them. Ninety-eight percent of them are paying by a credit card. Everything has to be put into the system, into a manual credit card system because they're not at the window for us to swipe the card, which just takes a matter of seconds to swipe a card. So while the person is giving us the credit card information, that then has to all be typed into the computer also. And once they're done, they have to prepare everything for mailing. I respectfully request Mr. Shear's demand for a refund be denied. His transaction clearly was done entirely from out of state. And I would like to ask the commission to pass the resolution before you dated three-five twenty nineteen. So we have a resolution that captures the facts that this is a specific initial title transfer and registration conducted entirely from outside of the state that the administration fee will be assessed to it, eliminating any further confusion.
Thank you, Ms. Janet.
I will stand by for any questions from the commissioners. Annette, did you want to add anything?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Annette Brandt, Chief Deputy Treasurer for Janet. Our issue's not with who you are or what you own. Our issue is the specific out-of-state transactions that require the additional resources to complete. I think that's all that I wanted to add, so, thank you.
Thank you. We are on number eleven, a refund of a vehicle title transfer fee, Mr. Andrew Shears. Is there a motion or discussion? Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd make the motion to deny.
Second.
Motion to deny by LaCroy, second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Number twelve is the Pennington County Resolution authorizing the treasurer to continue charging the twenty-five dollar administration fee for certain motor vehicles title registration service. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair.
To approve.
Ron Ross Connect, please.
Say, Janet, this motion that we're about to vote on, does that supersede the one that stated July first, two thousand and eight, that, that? I just wondered why we need this one if we have this one.
I'll let Jay.
I totally agree, but I just.
Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. To give you a little background, the charging of this fee, administrative fee in the treasurer's office started, as I understand it, in two thousand and eight. The Pennington County Commission passed a motion, not a resolution, but a motion. And at that time, the motion was to charge the twenty-five dollar fee. And it did not include the language of if you're a property owner in Pennington County, you don't get charged that fee. Then, as I understand it, the Department of Revenue suggested, which they're in charge of all motor V, titling, registration, and so forth, they suggested, not that you can't do it, but we would like you to put it in the form of a resolution. So in 2012, this board, or not literal board, but this Board of County Commissioners passed the, the resolution, I think, November ninth of 2012, if I recall right. And that included that additional language. So what this does today, given what Janet told you, is this resolution is not rescinding the charging of this twenty-five dollar fee. That continues, but it's rescinding any prior motion, the 2008 motion or the 2012 resolution, to the extent that that motion or that resolution are contrary to the language of this resolution. So you don't, we didn't want to stop the twenty-five dollar fee, but wanted to do it under different terms and conditions with better clarity. And so that's the, the purpose of this resolution. And as Janet said, it's not whether you own property here or not, it's not whether you own a mailbox here or not. It's if you conduct this initial title transfer entirely out of state. That's where they singularly have this condition where they have all these additional expenses and the staff time that's involved. So that's what. So that's what we're hoping to accomplish here, and I remember from Mr. Shear's letter that if those were, the motion and the resolution prior were rescinded, he would withdraw his request for the $25 fee.
Thank you, Jay.
In the future, if Janet feels the $25 isn't enough to cover her additional costs from out-of-state request, what's the procedure for increasing that 25? Is there some language in there? We have the.
We just change that resolution to a different number if we want.
Okay, I just wondered what the process would be.
And at that time, I would recommend that if that were necessary, that the treasurer come and present to you the, the specific basis upon which she would desire, or he would desire to have the fee increased, but.
Okay.
That's for another day.
Thanks, Jay.
And you, Commissioner Roskineck, you realize that I'm not the only person that's charging these fees in the, by some of the treasures?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Janet.
I don't know if the treasurer mentioned it, but this fee is not charged for renewals. So even if you have this entire transaction conducted out of state, the very next year when you go to renew, you, you don't get another, it's a one-time charge for that initial big process to.
The transfer paperwork.
Yes.
Got you.
Mr. Chairman, or Commissioner LaCroy?
Question for Janet. Janet, could you please explain why we're such a high volume for licensing fees?
Well, I can.
Pennington County and others?
I, I can tell you that this gentleman used to do his licensing through Lake County. The mailbox in Lake County has closed. There are counties out there that refuse to transfer titles for out-of-state people. And so they say, "Call Pennington, call Mini-HAHA, they'll do it." But a lot of them have switched to Pennington because we don't have a wheel tax. So.
I think it's more than just the wheel tax.
Well, we're cheaper. We don't have emissions. We don't have inspections on vehicles. They don't check VIN numbers. We don't do anything, quite frankly, when it comes to whether or not a vehicle can legally be driven on the road. And it's a much smoother process if you're in, I can tell you from some of the people that I've talked to, that they can come in and, they had three vehicles registered in Colorado, and they could register all three of their vehicles here and pay what it cost for one vehicle. One vehicle cost covered all the three that they paid in Colorado. The states are cracking down on people. We do tell people that if they live in another state and they're caught, that they are not going to get a refund. I know this board probably wasn't here. We had someone that was in Minnesota and paid over a million dollars here about 10, 12 years ago for a motor home, and they paid the tax to us. And lo and behold, Minnesota caught them, and they came back to us and said, "We want our money back." We said, "Absolutely not. Pennington County is not giving you a dime. You know where you live. We don't." So we don't make any refunds on anything like that. You know what you're doing, and I know Nebraska's starting to clamp down on people. If you've read articles, there's, we've had an incident, and I'll be honest with you, we had an incident where someone from out of state, from Connecticut, just last week, applied for a refund on unused decals. And then they called our office, ordered a duplicate set of decals for $10, and wanted a refund for $470. And thankfully, my staff caught it and said, "How can they get a refund? We just issued them duplicate plates." So they would have got by with a $10 license plate and got a refund for $470 at the cost of the taxpayers of Pennington County.
Wow.
So they're learning how to work the system, but we're on top of that right now, and we are working with the state to try to get some things into place so that that can't be done.
Thank you, Ms. Janet. Do you have a follow-up?
No. My end, my end point was, was I think we've all on this board in the county have heard that we are way more efficient and less expensive than other states are, and that's part of one of the reasons why. I don't think there's just one particular reason. We've all had people come up to us and say, "It's affordable." So I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. We don't have a motion on the floor?
I made a motion.
Commissioner DeSanto first. Is there a second?
Who's to approve the resolution?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
By Roskineck. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. 12B, Ms. Janet?
Okay, this is just to let the board know that Mr. Schlinkert was contacted, and he was told that his taxes were paid in full by an anonymous person. However, I wanted the board to be aware that even though a property is exempt, special assessments are not exempt. And we did speak to Mr. Schlinkert about that and told him that the specials he would have to pay on that property every year. I think it came to like $19 and, and some cents, and he had told us that he would be back in a week, last week, to pay him. We still haven't seen him, but I did want the board to know that specials do not go away on an exempt property. In the event that he doesn't pay the specials, we're still going to put a tax certificate on it, and we still have to go through the process of taking his property.
Thank you. Commissioner DeSanto.
But Mr. Schlinkert has been made aware of that.
Yes, absolutely.
Very good.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Is that tax certificate, has that been paid then?
Yes, all of that's been taken care of, Commissioner.
So he doesn't have any encumbrances?
No.
Relayed to the real estate taxes?
Not until this year if the specials are not paid.
Right. Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
I think we gave until the end of March, then we, then we kind of make that motion.
Those are, those are all paid.
Okay.
This would be for the specials that are doable in 2019 that are payable.
So how long does he get to pay before those need to be paid before it becomes on a tax certificate then?
December of next year, of this year, I'm sorry, 2019.
So he's got a year to pay the $20?
Right. And he is aware of that.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the informational? Okay, thank you, Ms. Janet. Number 13 is items from emergency management. Director Dustin Willett, please.
Good morning, Commissioner. Dustin Willett, Director of Pennington County Emergency Management. Was requested to follow up this meeting on the out-of-date pre-disaster mitigation plan. The state had requested updated information by the 18th. I had visited with all of the, the necessary jurisdictions, collected the additional information, and corrected the draft that I had initially sent into the state. I got that updated draft sent to the state by the 18th as they requested. It had a favorable review and was passed on to FEMA for final review on the 21st. Due to the government shutdown, there is a backlog of approving those, those plans. So by law, they have 45 days. Prior to the shutdown, it wasn't taking the full 45 days. I've been advised that due to the backlog because of the shutdown, it might take all of those 45 days. The state also informed me that there's no guarantee, but that they have a very, very good success rate. If it passes the state review, very, very rarely does it get kicked back to, for further revision. So, so the anticipation at this point is that it will receive a favorable review by FEMA and be back to us within that 45-day window. That 45-day window will expire on April 4th, so I anticipate having that approved plan back from FEMA by, by April 4th.
Thank you for the follow-up. Any discussion on that? Just informational? Thank you, Dustin, for following through.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a good day, sir. Number 14 is an abatement for Mr. Wayne Swear. If we could have Janet, Mr. Shannon Ripper, and Jay Alderman, please. Thank you. And this would be for a tax abatement?
Correct. Jay Alderman with State's Attorney's Office. You know, that old saying that it's never too late to keep working away at something, and Shannon and I continue to study this topic and this issue, pore through the books. Didn't have anybody outside of Pennington County that was overly helpful on trying to go down this road and try to interpret some of these statutes. But we have, we have determined that South Dakota, I believe comfortably, recognizes, we'll say, two exceptions. When you, for veterans who miss the owner occupied deadline, because that's the real key here. You can't have the 100% of full true value, partial exemption unless you have owner occupied. So you have to start with the owner occupied. How do you get there? Two weeks ago, we were focused primarily on the exception to missing the owner occupied deadline for someone who was involved in temporary active duty, and that duty caused them to miss that. Well, that would be true of somebody whether you're disabled or not. If you were active duty, presumably you, I suppose, wouldn't be active duty if you were disabled. There's an exception for the active duty. The gentleman here was not on temporary active duty. So that kind of ended the discussion. Further looking at this, I think it's reasonable, frankly, to argue that the legislature also would recognize an exception to missing the owner occupied deadline if you're disabled. Forget temporary active duty for a moment, just purely if you're a disabled veteran, which we know to be the case in this particular request. That statute is SDCL 10-4-40, and interestingly enough, when you, sorry, interestingly enough, when you look at 10-4-40, it references you to Chapter 1018, and 1018 is a chapter dealing specifically with abatements. So when you go to 1018, and I got to get through real quick here, 1018-2, Subpart 10. And there it says, "The board may abate or refund the taxes pursuant to 10-4-40." So it's circular. It takes you back to 10-4-40, which is the chapter, or the section dealing with a disabled veteran. Right above that, subsection nine refers to 10-13-40.4, and that was the statute we were talking about two weeks ago on the temporary duty. So the, the basis here for what Shannon and I believe to be an accurate assessment of the statutes, reading them together, is the legislature has recognized the 10-13-40.4 active duty exception, and has also recognized the 10-4-40 disabled exception, both of which get you the opportunity to apply after the fact for owner occupied. Once you get owner occupied, you can get the partial exemption for disability, which is our case here, and I think we finally get back to where it's a fair reading of, we can stand before you and say, "We believe this request and abatement is valid and reasonable under the statutes."
So you're saying if this board would like to grant Mr. Swear, Wayne Swear, his abatement at this point now, we could if we wanted to. But how do we move forward, Jay?
Two weeks ago, this board denied the abatement for 2018, correct?
That's right.
And so this board, at this very moment, would need to do a motion to rescind that denial of two weeks ago, and then take up a new motion if you desire to approve the rest of it, and I'll leave that to Shannon for the wording and.
Okay. If this board would like to do that, do we have a motion?
I would make the motion that we rescind the vote, denying the abatement for the 2018 assessment.
I'll second that.
Okay, and the wording, Shannon, to make sure, let's do the rescind first. Any discussion on the rescind motion? Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Janice, or I keep calling you Janet, Shannon. Sorry.
I don't know what to think of that.
I need to get you, never mind, I won't say it.
Okay, so the, the original request that, that you have before you again now is the, the property owner is requesting the 100% disabled veterans exemption, which is $100,000 of the, the full value, the assessed value of his residence be exempt from taxes. And I, I think that's, that's a simple motion to grant the, the 100% disabled veterans exemption.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Roskineck, second by?
Second.
DeSanto, sorry. Sorry, Mr. Drews. Discussion from the board. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And Jay just pointed out that it is not a 100% exemption. The, the law grants this $100,000 exempt from taxes to a 100% disabled veteran. So the, the property will still owe taxes, just $100,000 of it will not. Now, you just acted on 2018's assessment. I suggested at the last meeting you could, if you wished, do the same for 2019.
And that, is there a motion?
I would move to approve that abatement for the 2019.
2019 abatement, DeSanto, was the motion second by Roskineck? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Do you have something else to share?
Jay is saying that it is not an abatement for the 2019, it is to approve the exemption because technically, an abatement would be after the fact. We would be doing an abatement in 2020 for 2019. We're not there yet. This is granting that exemption because he was late with the application.
Okay, Karen, did you get, and that's okay with the motion makers?
I would amend my motion to reflect the exemption.
Of 2019.
To grant the exemption for 2019.
And Roskineck?
I'll second that motion.
And this board is all, okay? And Ms. Karen, you got the wording?
I got it, yeah, thanks.
I just, we, we do have the motion. We are all in favor of both, thank you. I appreciate all the work that Jay and Shannon did. We wanted to help this veteran, Mr. Swear, and they got it done for us. So we like our troops, we like to make sure we, we take care of them any way we can. And Mr. Swear, I would suggest that if you have time to thank these two men and Ms. Janet because they did a lot of work for you, and that shows that our staff is amazing and what they can do to find those gray areas to help people, so thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I would also like to extend thanks to CASIA through Senator Thune's office for the work that they did and doing all the background work on it too, so thank you.
Any other?
Madam Chair, you have a.
Dan Richard, please.
Dan Richard, this citizen. Can I, I'm a disabled vet, I went through the same rigmarole 19 or 20 years ago, and I would suggest, I mean, this is, comes up regularly every year, that you guys come up with a resolution or something that says, "This is what you do for a disabled vet." I mean, if he shows up with the VA saying that they backdated it 10 years, that's proof. You know, I've seen boards, the last board, in fact, rejected a guy twice based on Shannon's recommendation. And I, and I've seen boards before that just put him on the consent agenda. So I mean, it's been all over the place, depends who's sitting on the board. So it'd be nice if there was something in writing that everybody could.
Ms. Richard, not to disagree with you in a sense, but Shannon did his job on the last one I was here. The guy, the man did not get 100% until January of the next year, so I believe Shannon did do his job and that.
I didn't say that. I'm saying that the commission is, that's flip-flopping back and forth, and I don't agree with that decision, by the way.
Right.
But that's neither here nor there. But if you put it in writing, there'd be no arguments. There'd be nobody coming up here or anything. They're either black and white.
Thank you, Mr. Richard.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
First of all, I want to thank the perseverance of Wayne and, and his group, and, and also Jay and Shannon. You guys have worked hard. As far as the last comments that were made, I think our, our staff does their due diligence in trying to find every way possible, and this proves how it happens because every, every instance that comes forward is just a little bit different. There's different circumstances, and that's why we are here, is to hear that and determine what's going on. And so with that, I, I just want to give my gratitude to all you guys' hard work with this because this was a difficult decision for this commission. I mean, they did not want to go, you know, they understood Wayne's situation, and we all wanted the same thing, but we're also bound by laws too, so. But they did their due diligence, and I, and I support what, what this work is, and I just really cannot express the outstanding work that these guys have come forward with on this.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Well, then, just a sec, Commissioner DeSanto.
I just wanted to take a quick moment and say thank you to everybody.
And your name, sir?
I'm Wayne Swear, sorry. I'm Wayne Swear, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time in this matter and for the motions. Thank you. And Shannon, Jay, Casai, thank you for everything you guys did to make this happen. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, for your service as well. Commissioner DeSanto.
Madam Chair, I just want to remind everybody that one of the reasons that we have to go through this, rather than just doing a resolution, is because we have state statutes that we have to follow. And we could draft a resolution, but if we don't go through this investigation period, I guess is what I would call it, there's a good possibility that we could do something that would go against the state statutes that we have to follow. So that's my understanding anyhow.
Thank you. Anything else?
Not on that. You have a couple other abatement requests. Two and three, they're really pretty simple. They're abatement requests that come to you from my office. The first one's Canyon Springs Sanitary Water District is a taxing entity and any property they own is exempt from taxes. The one that says City of New Underwood, that's actually a property owned by Mr. Byalata, a building on that property was removed from the, removed from the property. Both of those situations are reasons that the commission may grant an abatement, and I would suggest you do so on those two.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the abatements on fourteen nine point two and fourteen nine point three.
Motion by DeSanto, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by LaCroy, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Shannon?
Okay. So every year at this time, I come before the commission and present something that leads us into the Board of Equalization process. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna repeat something I did a few years ago that most of the commissioners haven't seen.
Shannon, could I ask you, is this a forty-five minute presentation?
Maybe.
Okay. Can we take five, if that's okay beforehand?
Move to take a five-minute break.
Motion for five minutes by DeSanto, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That'll give you a minute. This is our twenty nineteen Pennington County Assessment Presentation, approximately five minutes.
Five minutes. I will try to move through this quickly. It's gonna take longer than five minutes, but I want to say that if you've got a question, please interrupt me because I'm gonna keep going, you're gonna have to say something. All right. So I've done this before, but most of you haven't seen this. This is an explanation of assessments and the process all the way through budgets and taxes. And we start here with a timeline. This is a calendar. Your property is assessed as of November first. Get all of these up here, okay? Because your property is assessed at its market value and market value changes and your property changes, there has to be a day, and the magic day our legislators, legislature has picked is November first. So your property is assessed at its market value and as it exists on November first. That's November first last year. And then we are required to mail assessment notices by March first. We get them out a couple days early, so they're already out and have been for about a week. We mail out an assessment notice that says, "This is the market value, the assessed value of your property as of last November first." And then if a property owner thinks that there might be something wrong with the property assessed in their name or its value, they can appeal that. And that appeal process has to take place from March through June, and there's deadlines for each of the parts of the appeal process. The budgeting process starts in July, when your provisional budget is due, and budget hearings are held through the summer. Your final budget is due at the end of September. And all of the budget requests from all of the different taxing entities are due to the county auditor on October first. And now we have the total assessment and we have the budget requests, and the auditor can start calculating the levies that'll give that much budget revenue from that assessment. She does that November, December, and taxes on that assessment then are paid in the year following. The tax bills in Pennington County typically go out sometime around Christmas time, and it says your taxes are due on January first for the previous year's assessment, based on the previous November first. And then you pay taxes, usually people pay half in April and half in October. Some definitions. Assessed value is, in South Dakota, that is full market value. What you could sell your property for in assessed value is the number that you see on your assessment notice. Taxable value is different, it's a different number. It's the number you see on your tax bill. And in South Dakota, tax, taxable value is eighty-five percent of full market value. The equalization factor, or the taxable factor, is the multiplier that converts assessed value to taxable value. We get that number from the Department of Revenue. Levy is a tax rate. And by definition, a levy is expressed as the amount of tax per thousand dollar taxable value, and we will cover this point several times in this presentation. The levy is calculated by dividing the budget by total taxable value. And budget, when I talk budget here, I'm talking the property tax portion of the budget. And I, I'm gonna focus on the county commission, but the school, the school district, the cities, the road districts, they all go, every taxing entity that collects property tax goes through the same process. But when I talk budget here, I'm talking from property taxes. Pennington County and every taxing entity, or at least most, get money from other revenue sources other than property taxes, but I'm talking property tax budget. Property tax in South Dakota is the primary source of revenue for local governments. The state of South Dakota does not collect, nor does it spend, any property tax dollars. Property tax is an ad valorem tax, which is a Latin term for according to value. State law in South Dakota requires that your property be assessed at its true and full value or its full market value. This is a misconception. Assessed value is not a percentage of market value. In South Dakota, your assessed value should be a hundred percent of what you could sell your property for, as required by state law. The office is called the Office of the Director of Equalization, and equalization means all property is assessed at market value. It doesn't mean that all property is assessed at the same value, or all property changes assessment the same rate every year. It means all property is assessed at its market value. All property is assessed every year. This is not true in every state. Some states have, have a couple of years before your assessment changes. Two years, I think Montana's even six years, where there's a reappraisal cycle of multiple years. In South Dakota, it's a new assessment every single year. That's cool, I didn't realize they had noise to that. Again, your property is assessed as of November first of the previous year. So how do we, how do we determine the assessed value? We use a mass appraisal process because we have to, in Pennington County, appraise fifty thousand properties every single year. And what our staff appraisers do is they go out and they collect information on all of the properties that are in Pennington County. We can't look at every single one of them every year, but we have this data on all of the properties. All of the characteristics that influence value is what we're looking for. So they go down the sidewalk and they measure a house and they collect this kind of information, the year the house was built, the condition it's in, size, quality of construction, all of that. The industry standard is that we inspect properties every five to seven years. Six or seven years ago, we were on a reappraisal cycle of twenty-plus years. We're not anymore. We have enough staff, we have procedures in place that, right now, for the last couple of years, we're on a cycle to look at every single property about every six years. That's the industry standard, and it's what we're doing. It's amazing how accurate you can be when you actually go out and look at your property every few years. It's making a difference in our assessed values. When we collect that data, we bring it back to the office and we input it into a CAMA system, a computer-assisted mass appraisal software that helps us value all of those properties. We collect sales information. When a property is sold, that deed is transferred and the deed's recorded into, into the Registered Deeds Office. We get that information, we verify those sales, and we analyze them. Like any appraiser, sales information is the basis of any appraisal. State law requires that we consider all three traditional approaches to value that any real estate appraiser is looking at. We consider a cost approach to value, a sales comparison approach, and an income approach to value. But what we do in mass appraisal is, is we create valuation models. A valuation model is a mathematical formula that represents the market. That model allows us to value a group of properties consistently, equally, and much more efficiently than if we had to perform an individual appraisal of all fifty thousand Your property assessment will change every year because in South Dakota, we are assessing, reappraising property every year. Even if we don't go out and look at a property, the assessed value could change. The reasons it could change are varied. The most obvious is, is your property assessed, assessment could change because your property physically changed. You added something to it or it got older. Every year, I have several people that insist to me that I've lived in my house for twenty years and I've done nothing to it, it's exactly the same way as it was when I built it twenty years ago. There is no property that has not changed. It's got older. At the very least, it's got older. And in fact, you've probably done something to it. Hail on the roof, and you replaced a roof. Maybe you had to replace some carpet or something like that. It might be just maintenance, but every property changes, at the very least, it gets older. The market changes. Our real estate market might not change very much, but over time, it does change. Your assessed value could change simply because our market changed. And your assessed value could change even assuming nothing changed on your property and the market didn't change, just simply because the value we had on the property last year wasn't correct. We want all property to be assessed at market value, and we will make changes as we need to. So if your property wasn't assessed at its full value last year, it could change this year. Our goal is accurate assessment on all properties, not the same percentage change on, on every property. I have a lot of people that are looking at what their neighbor's property assessment changed, they look at a percent change, and if the neighbor's property went up three percent, then by golly, mine better not go up any more than three percent. That would be true if we applied a blanket change in assessed values countywide, and that would be poor practice. Every property is def, every property is different, and it would be incorrect to assume that your property's gonna change the exact same percentage as any other property in the county. The appeal process. Once assessment notices are made, the assessment becomes public, those values are available for anybody to look at anybody's assessment. And once we mail those notices, we do not make any changes to any property assessment. We stop making changes once we mail those assessment notices. The only change that takes place is when a public Board of Equalization makes a change. My office might recommend to the board, after we've met with the property owner, that the board make that change, but we do not make any changes once assessment notices are made. State law requires that property owner must file a written notice to appeal before deadlines. Those deadlines are set by state statute, it's not something we come up with. There is a deadline to appeal your property assessment, and the law requires written notice. All Boards of Equalization?
Question. Kind of to touch on that, let's say you got three houses on a cul-de-sac. They're all exactly the same floor plan, square footage, the whole works. Your neighbor on the right, Bob, puts in granite countertops, new wood floors, finishes his basement. The neighbor on the left puts in new granite countertops because he likes bobs, puts in new floors, finishes his basement. You don't. Your assessment, and then, and then those two neighbors sell their house. Your assessment is based on the sale of, sale of those two houses would probably reflect on the house in the middle that didn't do anything as well. So you would recommend more than likely that that person in the middle come and appeal his assessment and have you come out and take a look at his house, right?
The situation I'm hearing is, is that there's something about, let me say, your property is the one that doesn't have the granite countertops and all of that. There's something about your property that we are assuming and we're incorrect. So we want to come out and look at it and, geez, we thought every house out here had a finished basement and granite countertops, and yours doesn't. So we will recommend to the board that they make a change, but you have to file that appeal.
Right. I just wanted to make that clear for the public.
And when you file an appeal, the first thing we're gonna do is say, "Can we come out and take a look at your property?" Because what's wrong? We, before we start arguing of whether your property is worth what we have it assessed at, we want to make sure we got the right information. And we have a lot of people every year that, when we say, "Can we come out and take a look at it?", "Why you want to do that?" We want to make sure we got the right information.
Maybe we could use another word besides argue, something a little more user-friendly?
Well, it is an argument, it might be a friendly argument, but it's a disagreement on the value, but what we're looking for is, is we're looking for an accurate value on all the properties, and we want to make sure we have the right data. And then we go to looking at the sales and we go over the sales information with that property owner. But by definition, an appraisal is an opinion of value, and that property owner might have a different opinion than we do, and the Board of Equalization gets to decide that. All Boards of Equalization meet in open, public meetings, they're open to the public. No public ever shows because they're kind of boring. State law says that they can't start before a certain date and they have to end by a specific date. This is really important. The property owner has to pay attention to their assessment notice and file an appeal if something's wrong because that appeal process has to happen by state statute within a certain, specific timeframe. And the appeal is on the accuracy, accuracy of the assessed value or the classification of the property. It's not on the tax. When a property owner comes before a board and says, "My taxes are too high," that's not an issue for the Board of Equalization because at this point, we don't know what the taxes are gonna be on that property. The appeal is, is the property worth what we have it assessed at? After all the Board of Equalization meetings and the Office of Hearing Examiner hearings are complete, the assessment is set and calculation of the levies can begin. I'm gonna take a tangent, go off on a tangent here a little bit and say, how do we measure the accuracy of our assessed value or of our total assessment? We use a sales ratio analysis. We compare the assessed value of a property to a sale price if the property sold, and we do that on all open market sales. So let's assume that your property is assessed at ninety thousand and it sells for a hundred thousand. We can say it's assessed at ninety percent of sale price. Now, that's just one sale. One sale isn't a market, but when we do that on every open market sale, which I think is around two thousand sales every year, we get a good indication of how accurate we are with our assessed value. We use a median sale ratio. We calculate that ratio for all of those sales every year, and we, we identify the median ratio. There's always outliers. The median is less influenced by those outliers than the average. The median ratio is what's used and it's what's required by state law. A ninety percent median sale ratio means that all property is generally assessed at ninety percent of, of market value. Then we calculate some additional statistics. A coefficient of dispersion measures how close to the median ratio the average property is assessed. So when we calculate that ratio, assessed value divided by sale price, on all two thousand sales, we identify the median, and the COD tells us how tightly the average property is grouped around that median. That's a better assessment than if it's spread out from one end to the other. PRD is a price-related differential. It measures the relationship and assessment between high and low. It measures the relationship and assessment between high and low valued properties. In mass appraisal, it's easy to assess the lower valued properties at closer to market value than the most expensive properties. There's a lot more sales of $100,000 houses than there are of million dollar homes. A P R D helps to make sure we don't go that route. The Department of Revenue audits our sales every year, calculates those same statistics. The point is is to ensure assessment accuracy and uniformity in every county in the state. The Department of Revenue has oversight authority over the Director of Equalization. Get a few of these things up here. The Department of Revenue identifies that median sale ratio and other statistical measures. The median, that median ratio is the primary tool that's used to set the taxable factor for every county. State law requires some specific accuracy measures. The state statute says that all property should be assessed at 100% of market value. Another one says, but at least at 85% because it's difficult to hit hit that 100% target exact every year. So you have to be at least at 85% of market value and that C O D has to be 25% or less. The C O D says that the average average of those sale ratios, the average of those are within 25% of the median plus or minus, one way or the other. 25% is horrible, plus or minus 25%. Painted County tends to be around 12% every year, a much a much better measure. The Department of Revenue also performs a compliance audit where they audit not only those sales statistics, but also simply the office procedures for every county equalization office. And that report, as well as the the report of the sales ratios, is sent to the commission every year. You could read that every year if you wanted. It's made available to the county commission. Look at some formulas. Okay. Assessed value times the taxable factor gives us taxable value. If your property is assessed at $100,000, market value, $100,000. Your assessed assessment notice says $100,000, our taxable factor is .9, then taxable value will be $90,000. That's how that works. I'm going to hit on these other two formulas and we'll we'll keep seeing this. Property tax budget divided by total taxable value gets the levy. Okay, and we have a million dollar budget. You decide you want to collect a million dollars in property taxes from $70 million in total taxable value. The result is a levy of .014286 or $14 per thousand of value. The levy is just a result of the budget divided by total taxable value. Might come as a surprise to some politicians, but you don't get to calculate, you don't get to set the levy. The levy is just a result of that math. You decide what the budget is. The taxable value is set by the county assessor and that taxable factor. The levy is just that rate that gives you the budget from total taxable value. And then the last formula on a specific property. Taxable value is 90,000, the levy is .014286, the tax on that property is $1,286.
Shannon, what's what's our average of taxable value the last few years on property in Pennington County? Do you know?
Our assessed value is this year, it'd be on the last slide here, it's 10.9 billion, I think. Our taxable factor has been .88, so it'd be like 88% of 10 or 11 billion.
Yep. Thank you.
What is taxable value? There is a state law that says property taxes shall be levied on valuations where the median level of assessment represents 85% of market value as determined by the Department of Revenue. The purpose of this is that most, if not all, school districts in South Dakota cannot fund their budget from property taxes alone. They receive state aid from the state. To ensure that every county keeps their assessed value where it should be and no county tries to lower assessments to collect more in state aid, the state has to equalize every county. So whatever your level of assessment is, the state will calculate a factor to put you at 85% of market value. And then in theory, then every county is on a level playing field when taxes are calculated. Now, how this works on a simple property, your property is assessed at 100,000, the taxable factor is .9, taxable value is 90,000. Remember taxable value is what you see on your tax bill, not your assessment notice. They're two different numbers. And taxable value is what the levy is multiplied against to calculate taxes, not assessed value. The levy is multiplied against taxable value. What is that factor? The factor taxable factor or equalization factor converts assessed value to taxable value. We get that from the Department of Revenue. It is the result of an audit of those sale ratios, of our level of assessment. And based on that, the Department of Revenue determines our level of assessment to be this. And then because of that, your factor will be this to give you 85% of market value. A little bit here that maybe make that bit easier to understand. Remember that factor adjusts assessed value to 85% of market value. If our level of assessment were 100% of market value, if our median sale ratio was 100% of market value, the factor would be .85 to convert our assessed value to 85% of market value. If we kept our assessments low, down to the very minimum, and our level of assessment, our overall level of assessment in Painted County were 85% of market value, our taxable factor would be 1.0 to to equalize to 85% of market value. So in that case, in that middle situation there, assessed value and taxable value would be the exact same number. If our level of assessment is somewhere in between, like 90% of market value, then our taxable factor would be .944 because 94.4% of 90% is 85% of market value. That's the math that's behind that taxable factor. If we were below 85% of market value on our assessed value, the taxable value would be something greater than one and or taxable factor would be something greater than one and taxable value would be greater than assessed value. And we don't want to go there. There's other problems with that. So we covered the the one for formula, assessed value times the taxable factor gives us taxable value. We'll talk about the simple one down there, how taxes are calculated. But let's focus on this now. Property tax budget divided by total taxable value gives us the levy. We know what our assessed value is. We mailed out assessment notices. We know that. We go through the appeal process. That's done and the assessed assessment is set. Then the Department of Revenue goes through those statistical measures and calculates our factor and says, here's your factor. And then we know what our taxable value is. So at this point, we know total taxable value. You, as a county commission, set your budget. Whatever property tax money you think you need to perform whatever government services you think should be done, that's your budget. We know what our taxable value is. You've decided what the budget is. The levy is just simply that that rate that will give you that budget money out of total taxable value. It's just a math mathematical result. This is a graphic from a couple of years ago, but it can't have changed very much. Your entire budget is the circle. The arrow is pointing to less than half of that circle. That is the portion of your budget is about 42% that comes from property taxes because Painted County gets revenue from other sources. Grants, the treasurer's office, some of the fees, the registered deeds, some of the fees that they charge. There are other revenue sources other than property taxes. In Painted County, property taxes are just less than half of the total budget. And we're talking about your budget request. The budget is set by the governing body of that taxing entity, the county commission, the school board, city council, whatever. You decide what you need in taxes to do what you need to do as a government. And every taxing entity, and I've listed a bunch of them there, township, school, road district, sanitary water districts, they all go through the same process. They decide what their budget is going to be.
Shannon, can you tell me what's the percentage that each city, county, school, and other get?
I don't know exactly. The largest portion of your property tax bill goes to the school district.
About 53%, I think.
Yeah, if not a little bit more. The largest portion. Okay, so half, half goes to the school district.
Yep.
And then the other half is split between the county and the city. That's they're fairly similar. And then there are other like water districts and road districts, fire districts that are a much smaller amount. The largest portion goes to the school district and then the next largest are the county and the city and then a very small amount to whatever others.
Thank you.
There are limitations in South Dakota law on how much your budget can change, not in how much your assessed value can change, but in how much the taxing entity's budget can change. There is a cap. Your budget is capped to an increase of 3% or the consumer price index, whichever is less. So if you had a million dollar budget, a $100,000 budget, make the number smaller for me, a $100,000 budget last year, your budget this year can only be $103,000 unless the consumer price index is less than that. It might be a 1% increase or a 2%. Your budget is capped, not the assessed value, not the levy. There are caps on the levies, but your budget is capped to an increase of 3% or the consumer price index, whichever is less. But you can increase your budget by the amount of taxes that are paid by new construction that wasn't on the tax roll last year. The consumer price index. The consumer price index is not a magical number. There's a state statute that refers to that federal index. You can find the consumer price index in Wall Street Journal. You can Google it. The federal government calculates it. That's for anybody to go look at. The Department of Revenue tells the county auditor, this is the consumer price index this year. If it's because if the CPI is 4%, then you're capped to a 3% increase. If the CPI is less than 3%, then it's the smaller number. And it's the same for all taxing entities in South Dakota. New growth. New growth is new property that was not on the tax roll last year, not a change due to reappraisal, but property that was not on the tax roll last year, a brand new house that was built. And the theory here is is that new property will create more demand on government services. So you are, one of the exceptions to that budget cap is that you can raise your budget by the amount of taxes that will be paid by that new property. New growth is a big deal when you get into the budgeting process because 3% or the CPI, whichever is less, is a pretty thin increase. New growth will allow another in Painted County, 2.5% increase. We tend to run about 2.5% growth every year. Stored CPI, this was a big issue here a couple of years ago. So your budget is capped to 3% increase or the consumer price index, whichever is less, but you have the option of taking that increase. You could decide, our budget was $100,000 last year and that's all we need this year. Nothing, no inflation. We don't need any more money. You don't have to opt for that increase, but state law allows you to store or save the option of that increase for three years. You can not opt to increase your budget this year and next year you realize, well, that was a dumb idea. We need to increase more than we can, we're allowed this year. You can go back and take that option that you chose not to do for three years. calculation of levies. A levy is a tax rate. A mill levy, tax rate levy, they're they're used interchangeably. A mill is $1 of tax per $1,000 of assessed value. Here is the formula. Your budget request divided by total taxable value gives you your levy or your tax rate. The math there, 1 million divided by 70 million, .014286. That is $14 on .286 per $1,000 of value. Remember, the levy is just a mathematical result of your budget request and the available taxable value. Sometimes politicians will brag that they lowered the levy. You don't lower the levy. You could, the levy could go down and you collected more property tax than you ever have in the past. The levy is just a mathematical result. You decide the budget. The taxable value is already set. The levy is just a mathematical result. Levies are not set by the governing board. You set the budget. Taxable value is set by the county assessor and the taxable factor we get from the Department of Revenue. Levies are mathematical result. Here is a bit of a graphic to explain what could happen. Levies change in response to changes in taxable value and budgets. If taxable value increases, if the county assessor raises assessed values or that factor changes, if taxable value increases, but your budget is flat, then the levy will go down because value went up and budget stayed flat, the levy has to go down to keep the same amount of tax money with more value. If taxable value stays flat and the budget increases, then the levy has to go up to collect more budget from the same taxable value. Those formulas again. We've covered those two. Let's get down to this last one. This is really very simple. On your tax bill, you will see taxable value of your property and you will see in Painted County, we print the levies and taxable value times the levy gives the amount of taxes that are due on your property. Taxes are always paid in the year following the assessment. Remember, we mail out assessment notices on March 1st. We go through the appeal process, the budgeting on all of that, and you actually pay taxes on that assessment in the year later. Tax bills, this says tax bills are mailed by January 1st. Painted County gets them out before January 1st. Most people pay half in April and half in October. That last, last two lines there, I want to focus on that. Your property accrues taxes, not people. People don't owe property taxes. The property does. We don't care who pays. The county treasurer does not care who brings a check in for taxes. Anyone want to pay my taxes, she'll take your check. If you buy and sell property, that ownership could change and who's writing that check might change. The county doesn't care. The property owes the tax, not the person. We try to mail out the assessment notice and the tax bill to the current owner of the property. If you just purchased your property the day before the tax bill was mailed, it's going to whoever you bought it from. And we get, we get phone calls like that. I just closed on calls like that. I just closed on a property yesterday and I didn't get a tax bill on it. Well, we're not that quick. We're really pretty quick. But we, we do our best to get the tax bill to the person that is most likely to pay it, or the one that has the most interest in paying it. But ultimately, the property owes the taxes. You might have an argument with whoever you bought the property from, about who owes the taxes. The county doesn't care. The property owes the taxes, not the person. Talking exemptions. So all property, all real property in South Dakota is taxable, unless it's specifically exempted by state statute. And that process is, if a property owner thinks that their property should be exempt from taxes, they have to make an application to the director of equalization by November first. That's required by state law. All of those exempt applications are published in the newspaper. That makes the public aware of everybody that is claiming an exemption from property taxes. And then those applications go to the county board of equalization when they meet in April, and the county board of equalization either approves or denies all exemptions from property taxes in South Dakota. The requirements. Very simply, to be exempt from property tax in South Dakota, the property must be owned by an exempt entity as, as identified in state law, and the property must be used by that exempt entity for the exempt purpose. A church cannot be exempt from property taxes if the church owns the property but doesn't use it for religious purposes. A property that's used as a church but owned by somebody else cannot be exempt. It must be owned by the exempt entity and used for the exempt purpose.
So Shannon, we had a shift because of what happened last year in some litigation, if I'm correct. And so we have a lot of hundred percent this year. Am I correct?
Yes.
Do you recall how many have changed since you, that are coming up this year?
So you're referring to the veterans organizations, but the fraternal organizations fell in the same thing. There's probably nine, ten, eleven of them, something like that. And they will be before you in April with a recommendation from me to make them a hundred percent exempt or whatever percentage.
For some reason, I thought it was more, but there's probably about eleven, huh?
I'm guessing.
Okay. Thank you, Shannon.
If you want a number, ask me before I get up here.
You're supposed to know everything before you come down.
Any tax exemption or reduction in an assessment creates a tax shift. There are a lot of people that think that if my property pays less taxes or no taxes, the government gets less money. And that is not true. You set your budget. You decide how much property tax money we are going to collect this year. And if a property becomes exempt, you still get your budget because you still need money, that same amount of money to provide whatever services you want to provide. That exemption creates a shift to all other taxpayers who make up the difference, so you still get your budget. Local governments set their budget requests based on the need for government services. Any valuation reduction or exemption for a few, increase the tax levy on all. Local government still needs the same amount of money. The most common exemptions. The most common that we think about are churches and charities and benevolent organizations. We got schools, hospitals, congregate housing facilities. And then we got some property tax reduction programs. We've talked today about the disabled veteran. There's something for a paraplegic and a paraplegic veteran. The elderly and disabled freeze a ten thousand dollar ag building exemption, historical moratorium discretionary formula. Those are all tax reductions. The others are exemptions.
Say, Shannon, how about utilities, like the new Black Hills Energy facility out there on Highway sixteen?
Okay, so you will sometimes hear me say that those properties are exempt, and that's not technically correct. For what I do, I don't put a value on those properties. Those are utilities. They are state assessed. The state assesses those utilities and provides a value to the county auditor. I don't have a value in my office for those utilities. So to me, I, I want to say they're exempt, but they're not. They're paying taxes. They're assessed by somebody else in the state.
But those, they will come back to the county and some.
Yeah.
One way or another.
They pay taxes.
Okay.
And it's just, I send you your assessment notice. The state sends them their assessment notice, and they pay taxes just like everybody else does.
Yeah, it was just some clarification for anybody that did not know that.
So you go on Rapid Map and you look up that property you mentioned, you're gonna see a zero value on it because it's not assessed by me. It is not exempt. It's state assessed. And they are, they are assessed based on gross receipts of the company and not necessarily on the market value of their property. I will go through TIFs very briefly. You are not gonna learn about TIFs from, or know everything you need to know about TIFs from this. This is, is an overview. A TIF is an incentive to develop in a blighted area. It is an incentive to create economic development. A TIF finances the development of infrastructure, sewer, water, street improvements, that sort of thing. The taxes on the growth in a TIF district go back to pay the development costs for that infrastructure. A base value is set before the development begins. Imagine a developer wants to build a manufacturing plant. And the idea is, is that ain't no way in the world we would do this. We can't afford it because of all of the costs it would require in infrastructure. A TIF is that incentive to go ahead and build it. Before it's built, that base value is set before the development has happened, before that manufacturing plant is built. The base value is set. When the taxable value increases as construction happens, and it might be a single manufacturing plant or multiple developments in that district, the taxable value is gonna increase as growth happens, the taxes from that growth above the base value is diverted back to the developer to pay for those infrastructure costs. This is a, a good graphic to look at later. Let's say that today the property is bare land and has a base value of a thousand dollars. It's expected to have a value of one point seven million after the, after everything is done that's expected to happen in this TIF district. And the, the TIF will have a term, in that picture it says up to twenty years. We've seen a lot of them, seven to ten years, but there is a term for this. During that life of that TIF district, the county, the city, and the schools will continue to receive taxes, but based only on that thousand dollar base value. The taxes that are created due to the increased value of the property after that one point seven million dollar manufacturing plant is built, will go back to the developer to pay the bonds that paid for the infrastructure costs. Schools will receive taxes on the increased value from an increased levy or from state aid. Once the TIF is paid off, the property taxes from the, from the entire one point seven million dollar value will be just like it normally would. To the, to the property owner in the TIF district, the guy that built that manufacturing plant, he pays taxes, just like he, just like anybody would. It's just, the taxes from that growth is taken away from the city and the county and diverted back to the developer to pay for that infrastructure cost. Ag land. An agricultural land classification is a big issue in any county in South Dakota. When I say that all property is assessed at market value, I gotta say except for ag property. Ag property is not assessed at market value. It's, in Painton County, it's assessed much less than market value. There's a huge tax advantage to having an ag classification on your property. This is the criteria for that ag classification. Number one, the principal use of the property is devoted to agricultural production for intended profit. That has to be the case with that property for an ag classification. An ag classification for property tax purposes is not a default. If a property owner is doing nothing with the property, it's not classed as ag. There actually has to be a principal use of the property for ag production for intended profit to qualify for the ag classification. And this is only for property tax purposes. This is not zoning. Zoning might be ag, or it might be something else. This is just for property tax purposes. So if the principal use of the property is devoted to ag production for intended profit, then one of the other two criteria, either it's forty acres in size, or in three of the previous five years, ag income of at least ten percent of the taxable value of the land or twenty-five hundred dollars. So, the principal use of the property is ag production for intended profit, and it's forty acres in size, or we've got twenty-five hundred dollars in ag income. The first, and then one of the other two will qualify a land for an ag classification. Ag is not assessed at market value. We do not use sales to set the ag, the assessment of ag land in South Dakota. Ag land is based on its productivity value, and state law specifies that productivity formula. I gotta say, we have really very little to do with the assessment of ag land because the state law sets up the formula on how to calculate the assessment. The value is based on typical yields and prices from each county. An Olympic average of annual income is used, and a value for each of crop and pasture is provided to each county. And the value, and this is where the county comes in, the value is applied to every parcel in the county and adjusted based on the particular soil rating for that property. The state has contracted with SDSU to collect those yields, crop yields and acreages and prices, and the state or SDSU keeps track of that annual income figure that's done every year. What it boils down to is, is department of revenue says, this is the value of ag land in Painton County, and we apply that to every property. And the ag assessment is based on an income approach theory. Your ag, your assessment of ag land could change as crop yields and prices change, but it's an eight-year average. This is the last slide, a summary of where we're at. Our 2019 assessment, we're done. We've mailed out assessment notices. Our total assessed value is ten point nine billion dollars for taxable property in the county. There's a lot of it that's exempt. This is total taxable property. That changed, an increase of about five point four percent, or up five hundred and sixty-four million over last year. We added two hundred and eighty-three million dollars of new property that was not on the tax roll last year. That accounts for about two point seven percent of that five point four percent increase in our assessment. Okay, so we added two hundred and eighty-three million dollars. Simple reappraisal of existing property accounted for about the same amount. And that gives us that total change over last year. Now about our factor, last year, the state said our median level of assessment was ninety-six percent. I've got approximately ninety-six percent this year because the state hasn't got back with me with that final number. I think it'll be ninety-six point something. But our median level of assessment will be about the same as it was last year, about ninety-six percent of market value. I'd like that to be higher. We're supposed to be at a hundred percent. A hundred percent is pretty difficult to hit a hundred percent without going over a hundred percent. I'd, I wish that were ninety-eight percent, and a couple of years ago, we were at ninety-eight percent. I don't want to go any lower than that because we're four percent below market value this year. If our market goes up five percent, then we're nine percent behind. And so I, I don't ever want to get too far below a hundred percent. Ninety-six percent is, is good enough. Because we have a median level of assessment of ninety-six percent, our taxable factor will be eighty-eight point five. It's gonna be eighty-eight point something this next year. Last year it was eighty-eight point five. We're gonna be very close to that again this year. So taxable value will be eighty-eight and a half percent of assessed value. So to answer your question about total taxable value, well, it's point eight eight five times ten point nine billion, approximately.
So you take the assessed value, ten point nine billion, which is taxable property, times point eight eight point five, or eighty-eight taxable value?
Yep, point eight eight five.
That makes taxable value?
Yep.
Okay. And then you take the 2019 budget times taxable value, which equals the levy?
No, budget divided by total taxable value.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Equals, sorry, divided by taxable value equals our levy for 2019.
Assuming some rounding, all right? And then one final thing. We estimate that our local real estate market changed about five percent. This is a gross overall average of all types of property everywhere in Painton County. Our local real estate market went up about five percent last year. And we get that number from several different sources. But about a five percent increase. So when you're looking at Board of Equalization, this, this next month, you can see how much we've changed our total assessment and about what our real estate market's done. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto?
I'm just wondering, where does Ron put in his application for his CE credits?
That would be kind of fun, Ron. If you're gonna, if you can get those education credits from me at this, that'd be pretty cool.
I don't think that's gonna work, but I do got a couple of questions. You said two thousand sales in 2018?
About that. I have to do that analysis of sales for the department of revenue. I think I was at twenty-two hundred and seven is what I had in the spreadsheet.
I don't know if the commissioners, how many of them seen a certificate of value, but anytime a property changes hands, that certificate of value will be mailed out and go back to the DOE's office. And there's ten, how many rejection codes are there? Ten?
That, I don't know.
But the bottom line is that if you've got ten sales, that doesn't, there's rejection codes. So if that sale isn't considered an arm's length transaction, that sale that goes in that mass database will be rejected because I think there's nine, roughly nine or ten reasons why that could, it could be between related parties.
Yep. Family transfer, something like that. Yeah, and there's, so there is about five thousand ownership transfers of property every year. About half of those are legitimate open market sales. And then the rest are family transfer, a business partnership, or something where there was no money changed hands.
Yeah, the point being is that the sales that go into your database are good arm-length sales that were open market and considered arm's length.
South Dakota is considered a disclosure state. When you, when you sell a property, you have to disclose the purchase price on that certificate of real estate value. Not every state is like that. Some states, the county assessor has to start making phone calls.
Wyoming's one of them because you don't have to disclose that.
Except I think the county assessor knows.
Right.
A private appraiser doesn't. Arkansas, I think the county assessor doesn't even know that sale price, and has to call and ask for that. We get it disclosed, but we still have to verify that we got good information.
The last question I have is that stored CPI. So if you don't, if a county opts out of that for one or two years, and then they figure out they should've, then they can ask for that in a, in a assembled?
Yep. So your budget is capped, let's just say it's three percent.
Right.
Okay, so you can only increase your budget three percent. You can also increase it for new growth, but ignoring that, your budget can only be three percent more than it was last year. You decide, we don't need it. So your budget is the same this year as it was last year. Okay, next year you realize, that was a dumb idea. We, three percent isn't enough. You can go back and you, we take the three percent from this year plus the three percent we had last year that we didn't take.
The point that I was making, let's say we did it for three years. So assessments would probably, or the mill levy or assessments would probably be the same, but if you waited three years, it would, my understanding would be, when you sent out the assessment notice that third year and you took nine plus the year that you've got coming, there could be a, if you, if you held off too long, there could be a major increase in property. could be a, if you held off too long, there could be a major increase in property assessments throughout the entire counties.
Not the assessment. The assessment stays the same, because that's the market value of your property.
Or the mill levy.
The tax bill, the mill levy that affects the tax bill, yeah. If you wait too long, and yeah, add up three years, 3% a year, that's 9%. Yeah, no matter what I do with assessed values, you're going to see a noticeable change in the levy and the taxes.
So the point is, is take what you can get.
And I do the same thing with my assessed value. What I mentioned about, I don't want to get too far behind. People seldom appeal the value of their property, they appeal the change. They hate it if their property goes up more than 10% or whatever, what magical number they think is okay. They hate that change like that. So as I can keep my assessments as close to market value as possible, I eliminate that frustration. The same thing applies to budgets and tax bills.
Shannon, it's capped at 10%, though, isn't it?
Yes.
I mean, you can't go four years and try to collect 12%.
I don't know.
It's capped, but I don't know what that cap is. It's capped, Gary Bell.
And it's only three years. You're getting outside of my office, that's the auditor. We put this together for a whole process. Want to talk about how much your house is worth? I'm pretty good at that. I just told you everything I know about taxes.
You can only hold it over for three years?
Yes.
And it's capped at 10%?
Is it capped at 10?
3% a year, though, really.
I guess the only other thing is on the appeal process, if you've got a property within, if it's in the county, but within Rapid City, for an example, you have, what, roughly two weeks for the appeal process?
I think it's a little bit more, because we mailed out our assessment notices a little bit early.
Okay.
But yeah, you have a very short period of time to appeal to the City Board of Equalization.
In the county, it's extended, what, two or three more weeks?
Yeah, first part of April, first part to mid-April.
Because what I didn't know is that if somebody's in the city, they do an appeal, I didn't realize that they go to the city council.
Yep.
So can it get taken care of on the city council level, and doesn't have to come to the commission?
So if a property is located within the city, or any organized township, the first step in the appeal process is to the local Board of Equalization, or the city council. And the property owner has to make that. You can't wait and go to the county. The appeal has to be heard by the city council at the local Board of Equalization. And if the property owner is unhappy with the decision there, then they can carry it over to the county Board of Equalization. And then if unhappy, they have the option of going to the Office of Hearing Examiners and Peer, or Circuit Court. If they go to the Office of Hearing Examiners and Peer, then they go to Circuit Court after that. But the appeal has to first be heard by the local Board of Equalization. And every year, there's always a few people that miss the deadline to that local board, and if the property's located in the city, they have no option. It has to be heard by the local Board of Equalization first.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Item number 15, items from Highway Department Superintendent Joe Miller. Number A is authorization to purchase two 2019 pickups off the state bid.
Morning, Commissioner. I'll try and keep this short.
You don't want a 45-minute presentation?
I hope not. First item, item A there is to purchase two 2019 Dodge diesel pickups off the state highway bid, or the state bid. The reason we did, we chose the Dodge pickup over the Fords that we got last year, is simply the ease of maintenance on the Dodge versus the Ford. They're both pretty comparable in price and in their specifications. The Dodge is just much easier to work on. I don't know if anybody's popped a hood on one of these new Fords, but you can't hardly see a motor in there anymore. So that's why, the reason we chose to go with the Dodge is over the Fords this year.
So do we have a motion or a discussion?
So a move.
Second.
Moved by Drews, second by Roskinett. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item B, five new 2019 tandem axle trucks, rejection of all bids.
So this comes to you. We did our bid opening last Tuesday. There were no manufacturers or suppliers that were able to meet our delivery date specification. So we're requesting to reject all these bids, and we're going to re-advertise for bids next week, and change our bid specifications slightly, so we can open that up to more bidders. As we learned, there are a couple, not manufacturers, but a couple dealers out there that simply didn't bid, because they couldn't meet the 120-day delivery date specifications. The trucking industry right now is pretty cutthroat, and they're only allotted a certain number of trucks per year, and some of them, you know, they weren't able to meet that 120-day delivery date.
I would move to reject all bids received, and for the tandem axle trucks, and re-advertise for a later date.
Thank you. Moved by DeSanto. Second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Public, anybody from the public, if you'd ever like to speak on anything that we are visiting about up here, or talking about in discussion, you are allowed to come up and just tell us if we're, whatever item, if it's on like 15 or 15A that we are discussing, you can come up and say, I have some discussion. So you can speak on these items if you'd like to. I forget to say that sometimes, but. Item 16 is increased uses of Jim Street. I did call Mr. Joe Miller tomorrow, our Highway Superintendent, and asked if we could set up a meeting with the city, and Joe, and maybe Mr. DeSanto and I, if that would be something favorable to you, Mr. DeSanto.
Absolutely.
I did reach out to Mr. Feifel. I actually received a phone call from him here during the meeting, had a voicemail from him, so I'll give him a call back and see when we can set up a meeting on that.
So Commissioner DeSanto, would that be okay to continue this?
Yes, it would.
To the next meeting? Would that be enough time, Joe?
I will touch base with him, and I can let you guys know when he's available, but that should be plenty of time.
Okay, so I would move that we continue this to the next Board of Commissioners meeting on the 19th?
March 19th. 19th. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Be a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Joe Miller.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item 17, items from Human Resources, John Morrell, Pennington County Compensation Committee Bylaws Update. John, please.
Morning, Commissioners, John Morrell, HR Director for Pennington County. So I've got two things on the agenda. We'll move to 17A initially. So we are in the process of updating the bylaws for our compensation committee at the request also of a commissioner. We're looking at restructuring, or adding an employee-at-large, if you will, so it'd be a non-supervisory employee. We just didn't have the opportunity to finalize the verbiage for that document. We met already once a week ago, went through the process. There's going to be some additional updates made to that document, the bylaws draft that's being put forth. We will be meeting again this week on Thursday. Our intent is to finalize that bylaws document, so we can bring it back to you for review at the March 19th Board of Commissioners meeting. So just wanted to give you an update on the status.
This is informational only, but if you have any discussion or anything you'd like to ask John, Commissioner LaCroix, please.
I just wanted to make, I think my note was clear, that, you know, sometimes we ask a committee or a board to do something, and I strictly wanted it to be just a suggestion, because sometimes we act, they act on it as commission wants that. And I hope I stressed, I just wanted the idea thrown out there and for discussion.
Yes, sir. No, and that's what it was taken that way as well. It was really the general consensus of the committee members, that that made sense to try to include that member. So we just have to get the wording right, so that we have the selection process, we have the qualifications of the members, that that's all identified. So we made a good first attempt, I believe, at that. We just need to finalize the way it, so with the initial selection, because we're already into the new calendar year, the document actually specifies that that would be done at the first meeting of the year, while we're already into March. So we have to go back and finalize how we would do that initially, so that it can continue then moving forward with the document as it was drafted. Thank you for the clarification.
I just wanted to show my appreciation for that committee that they worked on that, because they do a lot of good discussion, and to revisit that, and then come with a conclusion, I think they do some good work, and I think we get good data from them, so.
Oh, most certainly. We're thrilled to be able to operate in that function as well, to provide additional data to you as a board, to make those decisions, and including the folks that we had initially identified, as well as that employee-at-large, I think will still give us that input, that really creates the value for you as a commission.
Thank you, John. Anything else, Board? If not, let's go to item B, John, if we could.
Okay, so again, an update on status here with regard to a compensation review. I wanted to make sure that I had brought you up to speed as far as where we were, what the process has been outlined so far. So the memo that I presented actually talks about the fact that we are in the process of actually developing request or proposals. We wanted also to identify the fact that we most recently had done an elected officials' comp review in 2010. That's the most recent data we had, it's from nine years ago. So that's in process at this point. I've requested some, or solicited information from other similar entities. I've received it from four of them. I still have two or three more that haven't responded. I hope to get that. And then using the data that we're collecting from those other entities, in conjunction with the data that Commission Manager Holly had presented for us as well back in December, we're going to have some substantial data, I think, that will help us understand where other commissions are being paid, where other elected officials are being paid, and then similar responsibilities. So I'm trying to collect the data as well, as far as what they do. How often do they meet? What are their responsibilities? And we'll have that. In addition to that, though, is the request or proposal for the broader compensation review, and that document has been drafted. We're going to review that again at our meeting this Thursday. So the hope is that I'll be able to bring that back to the first meeting in April at the latest, so that you can look at the request or proposal, give your approval, or make recommendations for change. Ideally, the timeline for the request is that we do the compensation review, sometimes starting late this summer. It'd be completed by either late December of 2019, or January of 2020. So it could be, the data could be used during our budget cycle of next year, and then for application, actually in the 2021 calendar year. So again, just an update on status.
Thank you, John. Any discussion on that item? Thank you, John, for all you do for us. We appreciate the information, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Number 18 is items from planning and zoning. Director, how about Ms. Cassie?
Good morning, Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. So item 18 is the Planning and Zoning Consent Agenda. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item A, second reading of ReZone 1710 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1709 for Dorothy Johnson Estate. Great Western Bank is the personal representative for Dorothy Johnson Estate, and approval is recommended. Item B, Major Planned Unit Development Amendment Review 1704 for Kelly Development, Ryan Kelly as the agent. This was continued from the February 5, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting, and approval is recommended. And item C, subdivision regulations variance 1815 for Shreiner Investments, Shane Shreiner as the agent. This was continued from the February 5, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting, and is recommended to be continued to the March 19, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Cassie. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the planning consent agenda, A, B, C? At this time, is there any commissioners who wish to remove any items, A, B, C, from the consent agenda? If not, could we have a motion, please?
So a move.
Moved by Roskinett.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we on regular agenda items, D, E, F, and G. We'll start with item D, Appeal of Conditional Use Permit Review, Daniel Johnson, Highmark Properties LLC. Ms. Cassie?
Yes, let me get to this real quick here. Okay, so basically, what this one is, I apologize, I'm trying to get all the way to the beginning here. Okay, so I'm going to give you a quick rundown of this here. This is, oh, there's Brittany. I might let Brittany take this one over. She's the one who worked on this one, so.
Commissioner Roskinett, were you going to continue this item?
I talked to the gentleman last night, and the nature, he's got his bed and breakfast operation, and he felt that to continue this to the next meeting, he needs the decision made today, so that he can give these people enough, if we decide to deny it, that he can give us the folks that have reserved enough time to find another place, so.
Okay. Thank you for the update. I know you had said something about that at the beginning, so I appreciate that we're moving forward.
And he asked me to speak on his behalf, so when it gets to that point, I'll go ahead and speak for Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, Ms. Cassie.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor. This is the appeal of the Conditional Use Permit, CU 1730. This is for a vacation home rental, and this is one of multiple conditional use permit requests on this property. So this access issue, per se, would apply to not only this request, but other requests on this property. As it stands right now, excuse me, it's a multifamily dwelling, so they have a top apartment and a lower apartment. And to our knowledge right now, this conditional use permit is for that lower portion of the property that they're renting out as a vacation home rental. He did submit another application for a specialty resort, so he could utilize the whole property as a vacation home rental, the top portion of the property and the bottom portion of the property. And that was in, as a recommendation from the state, basically how they do their lodging licenses, and how our ordinance has written about vacation home rentals, is how it's a single unit and not a multiple unit. So this access does have multiple implications across the board on this property. Staff's position is, you know, we require access for these permits as part of the conditional use process, even in the state codified law. And in our zoning ordinance, that is one of the requirements. When they, when the planning commission and staff look at approving conditional use permits or any kind of uses on property, we look that they have legal access. I know that there was conversation going back and forth with the Forest Service, they said they would eventually give access, which we understand that they probably will give access, but there's a lot of things to consider when the Forest Service looks at these access agreements. There are certain provisions or things that could come up, or conditions, or if they, in any instance, could just only approve it for a single-family residence and not a recreational resort. We just don't know what that is, so that's why staff is recommending to continue this until such time that the Forest Service can make a decision and provide a recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Brittany. Discussion or a motion?
Can I speak for Mr. Dan Johnson?
Yes, sir.
A little history on this. That easement was originally generated January the 14th, 1988, and it was only generated to one owner out of three lots, and that wasn't Daniel Johnson's lot. It was, and it eventually got transferred to a Gregson. So the point that I'm making is that for 30 years, that easement expired December the 31st, 2017. For 30 years, there were two lot owners in there that technically did not have legal access. Now, if we can let two owners go across that 50-foot piece of ground for 30 years without any legal access, I would think that we could grant him the right to use his, if we were to approve this and review it, in one year, to let the Forest Service catch up from the shutdown, or on a complaint basis, I think that would be a little more fair on the county's behalf. I'm just, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Roskinett. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
In the last paragraph, or second to last paragraph of the letter that was written...
Mike, sir.
Sorry. In the second to last paragraph of the letter that was written to PJ, states that the National Forest Service has had them pay their 2019... states that the National Forest Service has had them pay their two thousand nineteen fees to use the road.
Yes.
Sounds like that's an agreement. If they cash the check.
Yes, sir.
Seems to me.
Commissioner LaCroix.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I tend to agree with, uh, Mr. Ross Connect. At the last forestry board meeting, you know, that, that government shutdown really did slow things down considerably. I mean, he's, there are thirty-six employees down, uh, and they'd made the comment during the board meeting that, uh, yeah, it's gonna be a while before they catch up. So I, you know, this has been a big concern. I'm, I know what these accesses, but I, I tend to agree. If we end up putting it off, it's not gonna get done this year. You know, I think it's gonna be too late. I would almost, I'm not sure of the legalities of that, but a motion with, uh, for one year, Ron, how'd you word that, Ron?
Well, to approve for one year or upon a complaint basis within that one year. So if there was a formal legitimate complaint, we could, uh, take another look at this. In one year, hopefully, because right now.
Ron, hold on. He, Lloyd's on, still on the floor.
No, no, I, he's answering my question, so he's doing good.
Okay. I thought, well, I thought he answered your question and he was gonna go.
Because, uh, Mr., uh, I met with Rodney Brown at the Forest Service, so, uh, he sent me an email and he said they're in the process, uh, of granting this easement. It's already in the process, but the, the problem is, is that it takes a fair amount of time and Forest Service staff. So I thought, kind of, if we could sit there and come to a compromise where we could look at this in one year, hopefully that easement's in place, uh, then, uh, if, if, or on a complaint basis, so that he doesn't have to call all these. He's got ten reservations. He doesn't know what to do. And I asked Rodney, when I was there, I said, Rodney, uh, can I drive to any one of these three properties? Sure. Can the propane truck service them? Sure. Can a furniture truck go up there and deliver? Can they have visitors and guests? Sure. So I didn't, I don't see anything adverse with, uh, letting this gentleman try to operate as successful bed and bed, or B and B for one year.
Okay.
Or upon a complaint basis.
You have a follow-up? Lloyd?
Brittany, what's your thoughts on that?
Commissioner.
Well, there's other issues on this property. There's also a multifamily dwelling, and he wants to make it a specialty resort, so he wants to continue to increase the use on the property. So it's not just about this, just vacation, one vacation home rental. Um, there is a multifamily residence conditional use permit, and he has submitted a conditional use permit for a specialty resort to increase the use on this property.
So, Brittany, just a question. So if he's, what, what would stipulations on his conditional use permit change if he made it a multi-purpose or ma, multi-lodging facility instead of just the bottom half?
It would be two, two vacation home rentals. So essentially, he could rent the top portion and the bottom portion. So it would basically double the traffic on there, double the use on that property.
And then he did apply that way for his, um, easement?
I do not know if he had spoken to Rodney about that, because we had never processed that application because it came back that this easement had expired.
And it sounds like he was using the top half already for people to come in. It just wasn't vacation home rental. It was, it's basically his family or something, and then the bottom half, half was vacation home rental. So it was already being used and that many people were already coming in and out, it sounds like, of the property. And if it was used as more of a full-time, it actually would be, as a vacation home rental, would be less people coming in there to me, um, instead of more. But, um, Lloyd or DeSanto or Gary, do you have follow-up?
One more question. And, and it's ironic, sorry. Um, I did a lot of research this weekend on vacation home rentals and, and, and what I was looking to through, when I was looking at them, was bookings. I mean, I checked multiple, multiple ones this weekend, and, and I, I found that not all of them are, like, people think they're a hundred percent booked through June, July. I mean, there's three days, five days. It's just not, that percentage, and I, I checked quite a few of them. So I, I get what you're saying. We're doubling that, the, uh, the occupancy, you know, one upper, one lower, but I, I just don't see everything booked. I was also checking prices on them, and I don't know what these guys are doing, but when prices range.
Thank you. Gary, you haven't spoke yet. Do you have anything on this?
I don't. I'd make a motion.
Go ahead, sir.
I would make a motion that we, uh, grant the conditional use permit, uh, for the multifamily residence to be used as a vacation home rental for one year.
Second.
Second. Motion by Gary, second by DeSanto. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Chair, uh, Commissioner DeSanto.
Brittany, um, the concern you're voicing is that there's gonna be additional use on the property. Has there been any complaints from the neighbors as far as that's concerned?
Well, that, um,
About?
That use hasn't been brought in front of the planning commission yet to increase that. So, because when we did the routing, that's when it came up that this easement was expired, was the routing for that one. So I can't, I, I don't know the answer to that, because it hasn't been heard.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item today? If not, um, just one more thing. Um, on this property, if this property, the difference, remember sometimes we talk about, uh, circumstances for me change what's happening on a property. They're not all the same. I don't vote all the same way on a vacation home rental or anything else. On this property for easement, most of the time, I agree with you, Brittany, that you better get the easement before we agree that this property is gonna move forward. But in this case, with the property moving, already having an easement on there for thirty years, plus it looks like the Forest Service, you know, they issued their permit, that's a common sense decision of moving forward that, you know, they are going to get it, and the conditional use has been on, and they followed all the rules for the vacation home rental. Um, I wouldn't want to affect somebody's business on what Mike could or should or would on that point when it's happened and it has happened in the past. If it was something, again, that it was a new easement, I think I would be in total agreement with the planning department on moving forward on this. So just so you know, that I don't usually do this as well, moving forward without, um, guaranteed easement, but it sounds like it's pretty much guaranteed.
Right, correct. Thank you. We just have to follow what our ordinance says, and those are the requirements in our ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So there's been a motion by Gary, second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Brittany. Item E is first reading in public hearing of ReZone, RZ eighteen-dash-eleven and Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Shreiner Investments.
Yes. Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director, again. So this is a request to rezone twenty-nine-point-oh-two acres from General Agriculture District to Low Density Residential District, and to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from planned unit development sensitive to low-density residential district. The applicant is Shreiner Investments, Shane Shreiner, and the surveyor is Spurlet Consulting. Um, so currently, this property exists as four separate lots. It is currently four mining claims, all zone General Agriculture District. They're all currently vacant of any structures. What they are proposing to do with these four lots is they are proposing to subdivide these into eight lots, um, which would be lots one through eight of the Keystone Y subdivision. Now, they have received approval of a layout plat and a preliminary plat. Their layout plat was approved in June of two thousand eighteen, and their preliminary plat was approved in November of two thousand and eighteen. So this request to rezone fulfills one of the conditions of their preliminary plat. I would like to point out that the surrounding current zoning within one mile of this property is General Agriculture District, General Commercial District, Highway Service District, Planned Unit Development, and then Keystone City Limits to the south. Surrounding future land use zoning within a mile is General Commercial District, Highway Service District, Planned Unit Development, Public Lands, PUD Sensitive, and then Keystone City Limits. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. Nothing of significant concern came back from the routing agencies in terms of the rezone. Um, so like I said, this request will fulfill one of the requirements of their preliminary plat. However, when this went to the planning commission, staff was seeking guidance from the planning commission on how to move forward with the rezone request, um, for two reasons. The applicant's request does appear to be in harmony with the lot sizes that the applicant is proposing to create through the plating process. However, the request is not in harmony with the current surrounding zoning in the area, as the nearest property zone Low Density Residential District is approximately one-point-two-five miles southwest of the properties. And then also with regard to the comprehensive plan amendment request, um, the applicant's request to change the future land use, um, does not appear to be in harmony with Pennington County's future land use. So staff did recommend that the future land use zoning remain as planned unit development sensitive, and so a denial of the comprehensive plan amendment won't affect the outcome of the rezone. They're two separate things. So staff had two recommendations. The, um, staff was seeking guidance from the planning commission on how to proceed with RZ eighteen-eleven. The planning commission recommended approval of rezone eighteen-eleven. That motion failed on a three-to-two vote. There was five members that were present at the planning commission at the last meeting. Um, so three-to-two was a fail because it's not a majority of the whole body of the planning commission. And then also, staff had recommended denial of the comprehensive plan amendment eighteen-ten, and the planning commission recommended approval. That motion also failed on a five-to-zero vote.
Tell me those motions one more time that failed.
The planning commission recommended approval of rezone eighteen-eleven. That motion failed three-to-two. And the planning commission also recommended approval of the comprehensive plan amendment. That motion also failed unanimously, basically.
Thank you. So at this point, Commissioner, let's go ahead and hear from the applicant, if that's okay? Okay? If the applicant could come up, please?
Good morning. Yeah, my name's Kale McNibow. I own Spurlet Consulting. Um, I represent the applicant on this, and the applicant would like to speak, um, a little bit, if that's appropriate. Um, yeah, thanks for hearing us on this one. Um, as, as I think staff did a great job pointing out, five members of the planning commission did come, uh, to the meeting. Three of them voted in favor of this motion, uh, two did not. And so with the reduced, um, attendance on the planning commission, the motion did fail. The one that, um, I think is the most critical today is the rezone application. Um, as was pointed out, we have four existing mining loads. So they're ranging sizes from approximately three acres to just over nine acres. And we're proposing to do is to turn the four existing mining claims into eight residential lots. Um, when I look at the existing zoning, obviously it is general ag around there. Um, the four existing lots don't comply with the minimum lot size requirements for general ag. They don't even meet the minimum lot size requirements for limited ag. Um, to kind of solve this solution, what we're proposing is minimum three-acre lots and rezoning it so that the zoning for those lots was commensurate with the lot size, which would make them, uh, you know, three acres the minimum for that LDR. So what we're proposing is to rezone this into LDR so that it fits. Um, I know the surrounding zoning is highway service and commercial, but highway service is only applicable if you're fronting the highway, and none of these four mining claims front the highway. Um, and commercial's not really applicable for the site because of the topography. It's steep. So with that, um, what we're requesting is approval of the rezone. Uh, the comp plan amendment did fail the planning commission, and I don't know that that makes any difference as far as, uh, moving forward with the project. Uh, we have discussed with the planning staff previously. The comp plan amendment, they're not in favor of it. Obviously, the planning commission voted against it, and I don't know that we, we have a, any, any issue with that, uh, getting denied. That's essentially just changing the map in the future. Uh, but we would be looking for, uh, I guess, support with the rezone so that we could bring these to market, turning the four mining claims into the eight residential lots. And with that, um, the owner is available, so Shane, would you like to add a couple things to this?
Does anybody have any questions for Kale? Okay.
Hi, Shane Shreiner. I, um, I don't really have a whole lot to add. I mean, kind of like Kale said, we just wanna take these four lots, existing lots, and turn them into eight residential, uh, lots, which comply with the, uh, LDR requirements of three acres or more. So I don't know if you guys have any questions for me or not.
Shane, what, Madam Chair?
Commissioner, um, Ross Connect, your open, sir?
We've talked about this, and, and one of my concerns was that they would have access to emergency vehicles. And you indicated that the, that road layout, they will have access to emergency vehicles, and that was my primary concern, so if they needed an ambulance or a fire truck or sheriff's department, each one of those proposed lots would, uh, would have adequate ingress and egress to emergency vehicles. That was my biggest concern.
Yes, and from my understanding is that, talking with Kale, that, um, you know, after, if this does get approved, then we go to final plat, and then, um, before a building permit was, would be issued to those lots, that that would have to be, the roads would have to be in place for that, um, to be a building permit issued, so.
When I studied this last week, I, I put this little narrative together. It says, "As Pennington County will continue to see significant residential growth in the next twenty years, the demand for residential lots will eventually exceed the supply, especially in the Black Hills region where the demand is the highest." Ninety-nine percent of the private land in the Black Hills National Forest originated as mineral surveys in the eighteen, eighteen hundreds, or homestead entry surveys in the early nineteen hundreds. The men, uh, mineral surveys are generally in nature, they were hard rock mining, they're steep, they're timbered, and, uh, that's, the bottom line is that there's only so much private land in the Black Hills, and as the, the, the demand grows, we're gonna have to turn those mineral, I mean, it's just, I've seen it happen all the time. A mineral survey is a fifteen-hundred feet in length by three-hundred feet in width. They're, to me, that's conducive to sub, if I was a developer, I'd wanna try the, uh, as Pat Hall said, he said, "I didn't buy this land." Be honest, I quite honestly bought it to make a profit. So if developers are gonna buy these mineral surveys, they're gonna have to maximize their profit. They're gonna have to subdivide them, and that is, uh, is the highest density that they can and still stay within his zoning ordinance, which your lots are all in excess of three acres, so they, they would comply with low-density residential.
Yes.
So I.
And that, and the reasoning for that is there's, there's a Forest Service access easement that goes through there that we have to improve as well. So, um, the whole issue of, you know, we have a certain amount of road to build, and it's the same whether it's four or eight. And so obviously, it makes, um, more sense for us to go with the eight lots to, to be able to get that done.
Thank you. Um, any other discussion or questions?
Madam Chair.
Chairman, or, I keep calling you Chairman.
I, I just wanted.
Commissioner LaCroix.
Probably relive a little bit of the planning commission. Some of the concerns that were brought up, and it, and one was from another commissioner's. Her concern was going from eight, from four to eight, increasing the density. Uh, there is another property owner in the area that has, what's considered a nuisance, uh, uh, business, and his concerns were, when you, you know, you're increasing the density with the residential, you're, the possibility of more problems for him. You know, I mean, I think he's here probably to speak today, but you know, uh, probably the increase in, in, uh, liability from the residential would be another guest for mine. But I, I just wanted to share with the commission that this was, was something that wasn't taken lightly at the planning commission. We were short some people, but there was some great discussion that going on, and I'm sure we're here today, too. And I, I just wanted to express that one of the commissioners was concerned about the density. I think Shane remembers.
Yeah, yeah, it was, uh, and, and too, like you said, the majority did, um, vote for approval, it just there wasn't enough, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Shane, I, I also, um, believe in property rights, but, um, PUD sensitive to me, um, I was told, I thought that we didn't have, they didn't know why they put PUD sensitive on anything. And I remember having a discussion, remember when we had the holding tanks, um, on some property, and I guess maybe that was why it's PUD sensitive and that when those cabins were there. Well, same with this. PUD sensitive to me gives people kind of a inkling of, why is it sensitive? Why is it PUD sensitive? Um, you're gonna have a helipad across the street. That's, makes it, to me, sensitive. It makes it bring up a red flag to me if I'm gonna buy the property instead of buying it and then causing anybody on highway service or, or, uh, commercial on that whole district any issues because you built, uh, close to the the road with low-density residential. So, um, for me, there's got to be, I think the PUD sensitive made sense, and number two, that, um, there needs to be somewhere on there, and I had said that before, um, if you want to build there, I'm good with that because it's your land, and you should be able to sell it, and they should be able to build there, but they know that there's a helipad across the street when you sell it, instead of coming and, and, or any other business on there being affected by you building that close to the road, because we're having some of those issues now. Um, from people saying it should be low-density residential next to a road and, and different things, which I truly believe it's highway service, commercial, then maybe apartments or something, and then LDR, but, um, for me to agree with this, it would have to be the PUD sensitive, and then, uh, something where I had talked to Ron Roskinak, maybe we could put it somewhere, it's not the deed, it's called something else, that, um, there's going to be, there's a helipad across the street. So I totally understand, and Mr. Mr. La Croix, when he was talking about the planning commission, that's probably some of the issues. So, um, I, I don't know at this point if, if I personally could go to LDR without something that shows, um, and, and protects those, those businesses on that road, sir. So, that's just, that's just me.
I mean, I think probably, I, I don't know the exact measurements, but I know the most of them are eleven hundred feet from the, from the highway, so.
Yep.
That's a pretty good distance. Um, the other thing we did was, uh, talk about, and I talked with Andrew about this, and, um, Buzzy, with the helicopter, and about putting a disclosure on there that says there is, uh, you know, a helicopter business over there, and, you know, as long as, um, there, and, and we would want to disclose it, too. I mean, it's, it would be in our best interest, so if somebody doesn't come back and want to sue us for not telling them that there was a helicopter there, so, um, that's fine with us. And two, you know, I'm not so sure that, you know, I hope Andrew does great, but, you know, it might not be there in two or three years either, so.
Right.
And something else might be there, so, I mean, things are going to always change and, uh, move forward, so.
Madam Chair?
Hold on, uh, just a follow-up, if I could, Ron. Um, thank you. Um, but that's why I guess I would leave it the PUD sensitive, because it might not be there, but you still have businesses in areas around that that, um, could be affected by that close to, uh, their businesses, so, um, and I think he just started his business, and he's been in it for 20 years, so, um, that's a lot of expense to be gone for, after two years, or somebody else not taking that business over, which I have seen, um, different helipads in the Black Hills around the surrounding area, Custer, that have switched owners, but they still kept a helipad there. So, um, I'm listening to you, Mr. Mr. Shane, but, uh, Commissioner, um, Roskinak, please.
Uh, yes, I talked to Andrew, he was in North Dakota last week, and he expressed his concern with the low-density residential, uh, kind of used the Michael Jacobs, uh, scenario that happened a few years ago, where they, the neighbors didn't want the helicopter business. Those were existing homes in a new proposed helicopter business, so I can totally understand. This is an existing helicopter business with proposed new homes, so let's say for, uh, eight residential lots, so on low-density residential. Andrew's concern was that they would get together in future as a group, uh, down the road and have a concern with this helicopter business and try to shut it down. And my suggestion to Shane and Andrew was on the warranty deed, when you, after your legal description, but subject to the terms and conditions found in miscellaneous document, da, 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 that document would be a notice to any buyer of any, any of those lots, that there is an existing helicopter business. So if they buy the lot in winter and they don't see the helicopters flying, they are aware, when they sign that deed, that that document exists.
Thank you.
And so where I left it at was for Shane to work with pen title Greg Wick, or first American title Sam Benny, or Mitch, uh, Lefur, to find out if we could, if, uh, something like that was doable, so that it could be recorded at the registered deeds office, because Donna Mayer wasn't, uh, familiar with it.
So Shane, did you check on that?
Yeah, I, actually, Cale did.
Okay, Cale?
I feel like it's, for, for a little bit of clarification, I did call the title company, their suggestion was that you could put it in the, the contract, but probably more appropriately belongs in the disclosure agreement, so, yeah, that it would be in the disclosure.
It's got to follow a chain of title, that's important thing.
Yeah.
So that follows chain of titles, what he's talking about, Commissioner?
If it was recorded at the registered deeds, and it was stated on the warranty deed itself, it would follow the chain of title and not ownership.
So just one question for, um, Brittany or Cassie. Can that be a stipulation to make sure that is followed through on this, um, development? Can you, do we put it as a stipulation, so it's a follow-through, and that in order for to get this development and this commission, if we decide that this is okay to move forward, that that would be one of the conditions for approval?
Um, generally, we don't put conditions on rezones, um, and that would be a, um, difficult condition for us to follow up on, even if we put it on his plat, um, because his plat to the preliminary phase has already been approved. The only thing he has left in the plating process is his final plat, which is an administrative in-house review, um, that's approved just by, um, PJ, the planning director, um, and that's a difficult stipulation for us to follow up on, because once the plat is filed, we don't follow up on the conditions. Again, they have to meet the conditions before they file the plat, so we don't have conditions that have to be met later.
So bottom line, we could approve this comprehensive plan on what they're saying, and if they did the, they came to us, which they do next on the second half, or second part on the plat, if they didn't follow through, for me, that would be, um, I'll just tell you, that'd be a no vote, if you didn't follow through with the first plan, because you'd have to show me personally that you followed through because of the PUD sensitive, and, um, there's got to be something that tells people, because we might not be here the next set of commissioners, and there's no guarantee. So, um, and normally, like I said, I usually don't do that unless it's PUD sensitive for a reason, but if you're going to take that PUD sensitive off, then, um, let's give, um, at least the business owners, um, some security in that area, that, um, these people won't come back if there's an accident or anything else that just destroys his business, so.
Madam Chair?
Sorry, Commissioner La Croix, please.
Um, just not the, first, I'd like to hear from Andrew, I'm sure he's got something he wanted to say before, of what I said and the density. I was just relaying that on from what one of the commissioners said on the planning commission.
Yep.
Uh, I'm still open to what's going on, but the thoughts that I've heard so far, I guess I would ask the property owner, uh, Shane, is there going to be covenants in this area? And if so, there's covenants, at the time of sale, every property owner gets a, even before sale, gets, should be getting a copy of the covenants, and if it's in the covenants that this property is there, that's an obvious transfer. I mean, Ron, do you see where I'm going with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's being transparent.
Yeah, and, so then the realtor knows it's, uh, if it's in the covenants that there's such and such property here, and everybody has to sign it before the purchase agreement, that would be, I think, a more perfect place for it. If, if, if Shane's, them guys are willing to add that in the covenants.
I appreciate that.
I think that's not at this point in time, but at that point, when it gets to that.
Right. Remember, covenants are not looked at on this commission as a legal-
No, no.
-binding. So anything that would be legal binding, I think on the, I, I believe still the warranty deed is more appropriate because of all the legalities and different things, you just know it's there forever. So, Commissioner Roskinak?
Uh, so as, as it stands, we have four building sites, is that correct?
You have eight lots?
Well, I mean, if they don't do the rezone, we know that those four mineral surveys are each buildable.
Right.
So we, 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 we know that we have four residential lots. Now, if it doesn't get replanted in the eight residential lots, well, that require a rezone because those, those residential lots, uh, none of them, I don't think, are ten acres or, so I see a mix, if you tried to zone them, I, the options would be limited ag or low-density residential.
Uh, sorry, sir, they're PUD sensitive right now, so it would show something, at least, they'd go from PUD sensitive to LDR.
Okay.
So that, the sensitive, that's why I'm saying, if you change the PUD sensitive to LDR, Commissioner Roskinak, that's where, I keep saying, I believe when you have a PUD sensitive, it brings up a red flag for people. So if you change that, and then you, and you don't do the warranty deed, to me, all you have is a covenants, and the covenants is what I've been hearing since I've been on the commission and city council, it's not legal and binding. So I would, to be satisfied, to make sure that people knew that ahead of time, because that's their biggest concern when they come in, whether they knew it or not, or signed a covenants, that they could change and say, well, there was an accident, things have changed now, Commissioner Roskinak. We have shown that this helipad or these, these property owners, these commercial properties are a nuisance to our, uh, homeowners. So if, if you, for me, you have to have a guarantee, if I go, if I spend $300,000 on a house, and then come in and say, well, you know, between all of us, we have $3.5 million into our houses, and he only spent a million on his property, look what you're affecting. So there's always, always different kinds of reasons why I could change my mind, or, or change the next four people up, or five people up here's mind. So for me, I've just seen it over and over again, that people go and, and say, well, look at this now, it's changed, so, and if you get three votes, um, his helipad's done. So, and that's a lot, that's a lot of business.
Only now, we're just, uh, always looking for that compromise, so that's-
No.
I, I thought we could do it via warranty deed and a miscellaneous deed, both recorded at the registered deeds office.
And, and I believe if that happens, at least personally for me, sir, I think that gives them a, a guarantee after the next step, so.
Madam Chair, can I just offer a point of clarification? Um, the future land use of this property is planned unit development sensitive, the current zoning of this is general agriculture district, and that is what they're wanting to take to low-density residential. They're totally fine with leaving the future land use as planned unit development sensitive. They want to take, as it exists today, and the current zoning from general ag to low-density.
Okay.
So it would still stay planned unit development sensitive?
So the PUD will, sensitive will stay?
For the future, yes.
Okay, and it's general ag to LDR PUD sensitive? I guess I'm not getting that.
No, the current zoning of it right now, so current zoning is the zoning that sits on it today. The future land use zoning is the zoning, zoning that's projected to be on it in the future. Um, the current zoning of it today is general agriculture district. That is what they are requesting to change to low-density residential. The future land use of it, the way that we see it in the future, is PUD sensitive. Now, that is what, we have no idea really what that means, but that is the future land use of it. That is what the planning commission recommended stay the same, um, and on a unanimous vote. And, I mean, Shane and, and Cale don't have an issue, right? With the future land use staying PUD sensitive. They're wanting the current zoning to go from general ag to low-density.
So to me, it sounds like you have a PUD sensitive, which is planned unit developed sensitive, and it's not on any of this property, it's just, uh, something that the, basically, future land use would like in that area.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not PUD sensitive, then?
Not, not in its current state.
Not if you change it. So then now, it's general agriculture would go to LDR, instead of PUD sensitive with an LDR on it?
No, so if, if you approve the rezone, what would happen is the current zoning of this would go from general agriculture district to low-density residential district. The future land use would stay as PUD sensitive. The future land use wouldn't change, just the current zoning changes.
So if this whole area develops, PUD sensitive is gone, because then you've taken PUD sensitive, and you've rezoned this whole area into something else, and PUD sensitive won't be used anymore. So basically, you guys are taking a PUD sensitive area, you've rezoned it from general agricultural, that's what I'm saying, general agricultural, to low-density residential. PUD sensitive is around it until you've rezoned it, then it's gone.
The future land use.
Yes, if they rezone the whole thing, if, if people come in and they put general commercial, and they put low-density all along that corridor, then PUD sensitive is, is gone, depending on what you rezone it. So even if you do that, and, and you see around it as PUD sensitive, you're not going to think your property, because most people, as you see, I thought it was the other way around, are going to be confused and think it's fine, because the other area is the sensitive area, this must be safe.
Madam Chair?
Sir?
So your point is, is that if we change it from general agriculture district to low-density residential, that the PUD sensitive will not apply to that 29.02 acres that they've turned into eight lots?
Right, because they've rezoned it.
It will only apply to the surrounding area?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to get you clear.
Thank you. Okay. Sir?
The, the surrounding area around these lots are all, is forest service, so, um, it's, it's not PUD sensitive, um, to my understanding, it's all, it's all forest service ground.
Right.
That surround it, so.
But you have properties where people will be buying homes, eight lots, with PUD sensitive that's getting taken off, so if that district in there is PUD sensitive because of a heli, helipad, or because of, like you said, forest services by it, I'm saying the whole corridor, if it's PUD sensitive, you just put, it doesn't change it, you still have eight lots where you can build houses across from a helipad.
I mean, I mean, we have four lots now that we can build houses.
Right.
It's just that they're not general ag, and the only way to comply with the requirements would go to LDR. And I believe the reason that they had PUD sensitive was because there's nothing, no, from what I understand, no other residential around there is the reason for that. I don't, I could be wrong, but.
Here, here's my bottom line, so we, I'd like, I always did, I agree with Commissioner Roskinak. I like compromise, so, me personally, for me to be okay with this, I would leave it PUD sensitive and build my eight lots, and then it would bring something up in people's head, at least, and if they didn't understand what PUD sensitive was, um, it would at least give an inkling, why'd they put it PUD sensitive instead of general commercial with LDR?
Madam Chair?
I, I mean, for, for our stance, we would, we want to proceed with what we have now. It's, uh-
And, and here's the bottom line, it's just me saying this right now, it's not your commission, so, um, this is just one more person's point of view, so, Commissioner La Croix?
I'm getting more, more confused as I'm going on. I, I need some clarification, Cassie. This PUD sensitive is from the future land use.
Can you bring that map up?
That's what they would-
Commissioner La Croix, can we bring the future land use?
I finished asking, I need to get somewhere before I-
I know. Mr. La Croix, let's have the future land use map put up, is-
Is the future land use map?
And how come it doesn't have PUD sensitive on it?
It does. You just can't really tell the difference between PUD sensitive and public lands on this map, because PUD sensitive is yellow-hatched, um, and public lands is kind of green, um, like a lighter green dotted.
Okay, sorry, Commissioner La Croix.
My, my point is, is the future land use, they, that's what they see it as, is, is PUD sensitive.
Right.
It actually is zoned ag now, the actuality is that, is ag, and they want LDR.
Right.
So, and actual, I, I'm, damn, I'm getting confused about, I understand the future land use designation, that's what they foresee it in, but, but that's not actually on the property right now, that's just the future, that's what the future land use would like to see it zoned as. Am I correct?
Yes, PUD sensitive is, is the, the future zoning, what our comprehensive plan currently sees fit in this area. It, PUD sensitive is not even a, a zoning district that you can have in a current form, so, like, right now, they wouldn't be able to rezone this to PUD sensitive, because we don't have a current zoning district PUD sensitive. Um, so, PUD sensitive is just, it coincides with our comprehensive plan, not what it currently is.
Okay, so that, that's just some clarification that I wanted, and, because as, as more and more of this goes on, I guess, I would like to hear from, like I said, from Andrew, what his thoughts are on- his thoughts are on this before I make a decision on this.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Just to clarify, you can't have both, you can't have both low density residential district and PUD sensitive in the same spot, in the same eight lots, correct?
Correct, because they're two different zoning designations.
And PUD sensitive doesn't even exist at this point in time.
Right, other than in our comprehensive plan.
All right, so there's no way we could get it put on that piece of property anyway?
So how do you do PUDs on properties?
PUDs and PUD sensitive are two different things. PUD sensitive is a future land use designation. It's not defined anywhere, um, we literally aren't even sure entirely what it means, but it is strictly a future land use designation. Planned unit developments are, are true planned unit developments that have gone through the criteria of our zoning ordinance, met all those stipulations in terms of, um, sizes, density, uses, um, utilities, all that kind of stuff. So, PUD sensitive is strictly a future land use zoning.
And there's no definition for it?
No, not one that we've ever been able to find.
And that, I guess that was my bottom line, guys, why did they put PUD sensitive? And when I'm seeing these PUD sensitive since I've been on here, is because there's areas where there's issues, meaning there's like the septic tank issues, there's maybe, and there wasn't a helipad, so I don't know how long PUD sensitive's been on there, but there's been, um, a lot of stuff going on with highway service and commercial. So, um, for me to, I'm not going to discount that, because they're sensitive, and I keep seeing, when I see sensitive, I'm seeing something that there's a big issue with why it's sensitive, so, um, anyway, um, let's hear from Andrew.
Madam Chair, can I speak just one minute?
Commissioner Roskinect.
So, yeah, if they just left it the way it is, it's still going to have to rezone one way or another, and PUD, PUD sensitive is not a zoning, so, to zone it, to rezone it from general ag to low density residential, just if they never changed that property, then replant it, it would still, correct me if I'm right, Cassie, but that zoning, uh, low density would still be applicable to the four mineral surveys.
Well, if they don't change it at all right now, if they stop their plat right now and they leave these as four mineral surveys, they can keep their general agriculture zoning because it's deemed a grandfathered zoning.
Okay.
They wouldn't have to change it, they can build four houses in that, with that zoning as it exists right now. The only reason they're wanting to change it is because they're wanting to subdivide it, they're wanting to increase the density and create more, thus they have to make it compliant with our zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And in general agriculture, you can't put four housing units on it, so they, that's why they're coming back for LDR. And that comes back to the warranty deed notice, um, bottom line. All right, Mr. Andrew, you're up, sir. Thank you for letting us discuss some of these things on this property.
Good morning, Commissioners, Madam Chair, Andrew Bussie, adjacent property owner to the west. Uh, as a matter of discussion, just wanted to bring the county commission back to 2011, where we've had a prior precedent set, and I know Commissioner Roskinect brought it up with the Jacob instance, and I just want to kind of elaborate a little bit on that. Our issues with the rezone, obviously, as neighbors next door, and the county planning department talked about it already, the incompatibility with adjacent zoning. We're currently highway service, and as everybody knows, highway service means we're joining the highway into the north and to the south of us, we have, since the inception of the property, that means since the forest service sold it to the private citizens, it's always been commercial or highway service. And so additionally to that, it also contradicts the Pennington County's comprehensive plan, and I'm not, you know, been learning quite a bit about assessment here today, and I'm not an expert about a comprehensive plan, or how the county actually works with the comprehensive plan, but I have read our current existing comprehensive plan, and I did spend quite a bit of time reading our future comprehensive plan, both of them contradict that corridor as far as residential and low density residential. And then lastly, just to remind everybody, inconsistent with the prior Pennington County Commissioners' findings from 2011. And so we've seen this map numerous times here today, uh, obviously, we have the pink, which is highway service, and the red, which is commercial, and then general ag surrounding that, um, just to bring the Commissioners' awareness to, we do have some replating that occurred and up in this corridor. So this property was all forest service, that's the history of the property, the forest service decided no longer met the needs of the forest service, and so they sold it in an effort to generate funding for some building. And so this, um, property was subdivided up to northwest, you can see the hardesty property, and that remained general ag. Uh, this is from our comprehensive plan, it kind of spells out compatibility, and so that's where I got my information to make the argument for incompatibility. General zoning, compatibility for low density residential, and does not include commercial or highway service, and then likewise, if you go to highway service from the comprehensive plan for Pennington County, we talk about compatibility zoning, general, uh, commercial, and then highway service as well, so. It's hard to read, and I made the note of this to the commission, uh, planning department for correction for our new comprehensive plan, but as you can see, this is our future land use map, and that's what we've been talking about as far as, uh, PUD and PUD sensitive areas, and right here, you can see this is the Keystone Y, and it's very easy to see the highway service next to there, what's not easy to see is everything else, but what we don't see in this future land use map is low density residential in this district right here. We can see it up here to the north, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Commissioner Roskinect, I believe that's Silver Mountain subdivision, and then you can also see the other subdivisions going towards Hill City as well. Uh, spells it out, in addition to the map, uh, about the corridor that we're talking about here, and the importance of the tourism to our economy in Pennington County, just keep in mind, tourism brings in approximately 3.8 billion dollars to the state, 291 million dollars every year annually from state and local taxes are generated from our tourism, and that's all directly related, obviously, to Mount Rushmore. The comprehensive plan that we're currently operating on talks about this corridor and outlines it here, and the commercial activity taking place in that corridor between Rapid City, Keystone, and Hill City. Just want to follow up a little bit, um, with the conditional use permit from 2011 and the precedent set by the county commissioners, it was obviously a different set of county commissioners, but I think in fairness, uh, to the ruling and to the precedent set, we do have a commercial that was presented as a rezone to highway service, and they had requested a conditional use permit for that heliport, and that heliport was denied by the county commissioners as a result of the proximity to the low density residential. And so as Ms. Commissioner Roskinect pointed out, you know, it's kind of, uh, an opposite situation, but I would tell you that if we had a subdivision there, and it was zoned low density residential, that we would have never purchased our property across the street from it, because it was not an ideal spot for a heliport. So that's just one thing to take into consideration, and we worked with the planning and zoning department to identify the correct property to purchase for the heliport. We initially looked at the Silver Mountain heliport area, uh, prior to the CUP, and talking to the planning zoning department, which is a different, uh, set of folks than we have today, they recommended maybe trying to find something else because of that proximity. And so, uh, the precedents, I think, were, that's before us today is, we know we're a nuisance business, and we're trying to operate as friendly as we possibly can, and we're just asking the question, is that the right spot for a subdivision immediately across the street? And I don't know if, during the meeting here, I just heard a helicopter fly over, and I look outside, and the structure of this building is quite, uh, significant, and probably a lot more than you'd hear in a general residence construction, and, you know, those Department of Energy's helicopter flying over, which is the same size as one of our helicopters. And so I could hear it through this building, and he just flew over one time. And so my concern is being, uh, next door is having a subdivision that's going to hear me flying over approximately 700 times a month, um, May through October 31st. Um, and just to reiterate, I know not everybody likes helicopters, um, and that has been a contentious argument for everybody, uh, with the other operator that's been out there, but I do remind, um, three out of the four helicopter pilots that operate for me as the Black Hills Lifeflight, uh, got their experience flying tours in the Black Hills, and the same goes for the guys that were fighting fire out of Custer, we have a contracted helicopter that comes up from Wyoming and Colorado, and that pilot, those two pilots also got their experience from flying tours in the Black Hills, so these tours are important, not only as a source of revenue and a thing for, uh, attraction for tourists to do, but they also serve to train our pilots, to provide community services such as lifeflight and firefighting in the future.
Thank you, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
So Andrew? If they were to build these eight houses, how would that negatively impact your already established business?
Well, what we've seen in Pennington County in the last 10 years is we have had an existing heliport that was established in 1961 in Keystone, uh, by Bruce Schultz, and what happened was, we had a state politician, Stan Adelstein, came and bought property adjoining, not even adjoining the property, it was actually on their path to Mount Rushmore, and through his political power, was able to force the closure of that business in Keystone and force a relocate, it wasn't a closure, it was a relocation, and at that time, um, one of the other business owners in Keystone offered to sublease a portion of his property to the heliport, or to the helicopter tour operator. And so we've seen this, uh, just in Pennington County alone, and I know we're talking about heliports right now, but it's really just nuisance properties, and so to me, um, you know, we're lumped into a category of industrial racetracks, anything that's producing loud noises. And so that's the precedence that I've seen, and that's my concern, and that's why I'm here today. You know, I've been working with the Shriners, trying to organize something, and I think it's, uh, important that we try to find a compromise, and I'd love to have the Shriners as my next door neighbors, but the problem is Shriners are developers, and so they're selling their property, you know, these properties to future, um, our future neighbors, and so going forward with that, um, you know, we're going to have to work with somebody other than the Shriners, and I think today, we can work with the Shriners, and we'd love to have the Shriners our neighbors, but the reality of the situation is, we're dealing with somebody that's going to buy a lot in a subdivision, and I think they look at it, if the subdivision was approved by the county commission, then it must be okay, and then all of a sudden, they have 700 helicopters flying over the top of them, and they're wondering how the subdivision got approved.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto, follow up?
For Cassie. Is there any safeguard that we can put if we change this zoning to low density residential? Is there any safeguards that we can put that these, whoever decides to buy, buy these homes can't come back on the business, the surrounding businesses and?
Um, I, I don't know through what our department does, if you'd be able to put in any sort of safeguard, I mean, I think Commissioner Roskinect gave a good idea, I mean, you might be able to safeguard it through the formation of covenants or disclosures or things along those lines, um, but within our office, the only way we can safeguard it is for Andrew to make sure that he's always meeting the conditions of his conditional use permit, um, but then again, that doesn't necessarily prevent the neighbors from being able to, you know, join together and create enough of a havoc in Andrew's life to where he just, you know, without even, maybe not necessarily meeting his conditions, just, you know, it overwhelms him.
Right.
From a, a civil standpoint, that we can't safeguard against.
Thank you, that's my concern, I, as everybody on this board knows, I, I like to let people do what they want to with their land unless something's been established in, prior to them doing something different with their land that could possibly have an adverse effect on that property owner, um, so, I don't know.
Commissioner Roskinect.
Uh, Andrew, you, you do acknowledge that they can put four residences on that property without doing anything? So my question is, if they put eight, what's the difference going to be?
Rezone.
Well, I think it's, uh, with the rezoning going to low density residential, I think inherently, it's going to create the argument that it's a subdivision next to a heliport. And right now, we have four general ag properties, or potentially four houses on general ag, and I think it lessens the argument going forward. And so, we acknowledge the fact that we're going to have four neighbors next to us, we acknowledge the fact that we could have bought the property, you know, and we tried to buy the property and didn't get it purchased, and so, uh, we acknowledge the fact that there can be four houses next door, and we think the current zoning is adequate and consistent with the four houses. If we go to low density residential, my understanding is that puts three dwelling units per house, and so if you wanted to do vacation rentals on there, that would be allowed under low density residential to build those three dwelling units per acre, but I could be incorrect.
But if they worked with you to incorporate a safety mechanism that would work with the title company, we talked about that, and you told me that you thought that was probably an acceptable idea, so.
I think it's a great idea, and I wish I would have had it and could lay claim to it.
So would you, if Shane could, uh, work on that with one of the title companies, would that, uh, be a compromise so that whoever bought those lots would know that, that there's going to be a helicopter, that there is an existing helicopter business that would protect your, you, or if you conveyed it down the road to someone else, it would always be, uh, recorded?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's something you guys would be interested in working together on?
I think, uh, moving forward, we always need to look for ways to compromise, and I think that was a great idea for moving forward, and so if there's a way for the Commissioners to, uh, mandate that that's in a warranty deed, we'd be okay with it.
So, thank you, Andrew. Cassie? This is general ag right now?
Yes.
Um, they have to rezone no matter what to put four houses on general ag, don't they?
No, um, if they just leave it the way that it is right now, if they, um, don't play with the zoning, they don't change the way that these lots are currently configured, they can remain like they are now, because at this stage, they have a, um, legal nonconforming status in terms of their zoning.
So they have four lots, basically, already that were established on here because of the mining claims makes it so they can put four houses, because usually general ag, we can't put four houses on general ag?
Well, it's four separate lots, so they could put a house on each lot, they could put a house on each claim.
Each of those lots are 40 acres?
No, they are, that's their legal nonconforming status, is they are not 40 acres in a general agriculture district, but they are mineral claims, so they were platted way before our zoning ordinance came about, so they're allowed to be the way that they are right now.
Okay, thank you. Commission? Commissioner LaCroy?
I'm eating candy. Thanks, Andrew, for that update, because I guess, I think it's important to know why he's here, I don't think he's here trying to limit or anything, but he had concerns of, of his business, but from what I've heard so far from, on this commission, I think there's support for approval of the eight, if it goes, something gets registered with the register of deed, uh, the rezone, if it goes with the register of deeds, that there's a heliport, helipad, like, pad nearby, some type of, I've heard that from Andrew and, and the property owners. So I just wanted to express, that's what I've heard, and I can't make a motion without the speaking, so.
Um, let's hear from Shane, if, I know he's worked with, uh, and has talked to Andrew. Shane, um, moving forward, are you willing to do the warranty deed notice on the properties, uh, moving forward that you are changing to LDR?
Yes, yeah, we talked, I talked to Andrew, I talked to Ron, um, you know, it's in our best interest too.
Okay.
Because we could get tangled up in a non-disclosure, uh, you know, we didn't let them know that there's a noisy helicopter next door, so.
Okay, and you're giving us this word that that's, on moving forward, that's what's going to happen? Thank you, Shane.
I'd make that motion.
Motion to?
Approve with condition of? Warranty of deed notice.
Warranty and miscellaneous.
And miscellaneous, which could be?
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Roskinect, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Item F.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, was that approval of just the rezone, because I also need one on the comprehensive plan amendment too? To change, to keep the future land use?
It was only the rezone.
Okay, so, can I also get a motion on the comprehensive plan amendment?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto?
Um, sorry, I forgot your name.
Sorry, I forgot your name.
Oh, it's Cale.
Cale. You guys were okay with, without having the comprehensive plan approved?
Yeah, we have no issue with letting the comp plan amendment stay the way it is. PUD sensitive.
Okay.
So, planning commission recommended denial, and we have no problem with denial.
So I would make that motion to deny the comprehensive plan amendment.
A second?
Second.
Second. Moved by DeSanto, second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
You guys didn't vote on the first one.
What's that?
You didn't vote on the first one.
Who didn't vote?
You didn't vote on the first one.
We voted on LaCroy, and Roskinet was?
Do a, all in favor.
Okay. I thought I did.
I didn't hear you.
So on the rezone, there was a motion by LaCroy, second by Roskinet. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I think I did, but that's okay, sister.
I didn't hear you.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if this, if I'm wrong or not, but they were recommending that it not change, and then you guys denied their recommendation not to change, so I'm not for sure if that's correct.
There was two.
The future land use, so.
Cassie, could you confirm for us? So the PUD sensitive is staying, and it's not changing.
How do you guys approve it and deny it or approve it?
Correct. Based on the votes that you guys just made, you approved the rezone from general agriculture district to low-density residential district and denied them changing the future land use, so the future land use will stay PUD sensitive.
There you go. That's the way Shane understood. Thank you. Did you understand that, Shane?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we're on item F, second reading of rezone and comprehensive plan amendment. Borglum Historic Center Incorporated, Duane Pangretz, and Ken Nash, agent. First, we'll have planning, Ms. Brittany?
Good morning, Brittany Molitor. This is a rezone request to rezone 19.419 acres from general agriculture district to general commercial district. This was heard by this board on January 28, 2019, and was continued in order for the property owners to have time to make other arrangements regarding this request. So I guess that's where we are right now. The first reading was approved by this board.
Do we have the applicant, please, who wants to visit or tell us about their property? Ken Nash here?
Sorry.
You're the applicant, sir? That's okay. Did we put you to sleep?
Yeah.
Are you ready for this?
I suppose.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, I was in Camp Logon because I was with a military group this morning and came here directly, so.
If you could tell us, it sounds like you guys had worked out a agreement with some of the neighbors and how you move forward and what's happening next on the property, sir?
Yes, we met with the neighbors and Ron four times now since this has started. Before the plating started, I went to the neighbors to see if we could avoid this and offered to let them buy the property and split it up. I took a map with me so that they could divide it up if they chose to. And we made a deal at that point where one property owner was gonna buy the whole thing. We started along that process and cleaned up some trees and filled in some holes on the property, and then towards the end of the plating process, they backed out of that deal. So then I got another purchase agreement the next day for a new buyer, and that's when we tried to get the rezoning done. And since then, we've met several times with Ron and the landowners to buy some adjacent bordering property on that, because I can't sell or do anything with it right now because it's under contract. And so we came to an agreement with that on the northern end. They purchased or are going to purchase a bordering strip along the north side of the property. So I think everything has been addressed. The offer was made to the group to buy the whole property after our last meeting here, and they decided not to. And then the next day, he met with the landowner on the north side and made a deal with them. And then that's where we stand right now. There has been a compromise, and they will sell him some bordering property there on the north side, and so we can move forward.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Nash? Just one question, is that based on if this comprehensive plan changes your agreement or it's happening no matter what? That buffer?
I don't know if they made an arrangement there or not, depending on that. I was not on that meeting.
Maybe they could tell us.
That was with the landowner and the new buyer.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
Just one question, Mr. Nash. When this first came forward in December, it was just to change where the signs were and leave, I believe it's a zoned ag at that time, and then we had problems with the road district. And then all of a sudden, then it come back after all that, it came back that everything wanted to be general commercial. What would be the reasoning behind that?
The whole, the whole piece was going to be zoned, oh.
You know what I'm talking about, the signs? This is the way it was presented to us back in December, is that they wanted to do the commercial, just a certain piece to keep the signs, because that was gonna go to keeping the person's property for income or whatever. That's what I remember being said. And then I don't quite remember why things didn't happen, but they didn't get done in December, then all of a sudden, it comes back and they want the whole property zoned general commercial. I'm, just personally, I wanna know why, you know, because then the road district was a problem, and then all of a sudden, there's a second access found, and then they're allowed to do that. So then, there's no, shouldn't be any problem with the road district. You know, because that was the, one of the first complaints that when it first come up is the road district had a problem with the access getting onto that commercial property. And so then, maybe that's why it got continued on, but then all of a sudden, we find out that you could use that access off the highway for that property, just for that little strip of where those signs are. But then now, the whole thing wants to be commercial. So I'm just trying to follow the process of what's happening with, what's going on. Seems like one problem got fixed, but then another one was created, but it's kinda compounded by changing it all to general commercial.
Right, because the first deal that was made, we were going to leave that and just do the commercial strip on the billboards. But then when they backed out of that, the new buyer wanted to create a commercial lot. So we just made, went and applied for the whole thing to be commercial, which put us off. On the entrance, it was just for emergency access. The main entrance is always gonna be off of Highway 16, and I wanted to verify that with Mike Carlson at the state DOT before I said that. And so we got a letter from him saying that we could have access off of Highway 16. So that took away that entrance of being the main entrance. It was not ever gonna be the main entrance. It was just gonna be an emergency, egress and ingress.
Okay. Follow up. Thank you, because I think that was one of my biggest concerns, and one of that I heard over the weekend was they thought this would be a main access. And it seems like I remember limited, like you said, emergency only.
Right.
So anything further above and beyond that, there's gonna have to fight, be another way created to get access to that.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Any other questions for Mr. Nash, right?
Yes.
Okay. And about the landowners, did they want to come up that are adjacent to this? Good morning, your name, sir?
Hi, I'm Merv Gussmiller. Can I have a map that shows the lot, this property?
Ms. Brittany, thank you.
There's that one. Does that work?
Yeah, oops, that one, the back one. Yes, okay. Okay, I only see the long, long narrow lot on the north side, and then there's two lots to the right of it, so there's three lots that border the north side of the property. Okay, and we, and the agreement that we've come to is to purchase a 102-foot setback just from the north side of that property. And it's with the understanding, it's a defensive action against this going commercial. Okay, it's, and it's at the point where our purchase agreement is null and void if it does not, if it, if it does not go commercial, okay? So we only have a purchase agreement.
He said, I'm sorry, Lloyd, he said if it goes commercial, he, basically you're gonna buy it. If it doesn't go commercial, he's not buying it.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I wanted, right.
Okay. So, and the property owners, there's two lots on the west side, do not have a setback purchase, so you understand that. So I'd prefer it still go low-density residential instead of commercial.
Any questions for? Okay, thank you, sir.
I am a property owner in this area, but I'm really here today to express to you my concerns that I have regarding the safety for the general public associated with the traffic resulting from the access point of the subject property, as well as just the unique characteristics of this location relative to other properties across Highway 16. As you can see from, from the map that you have in front of you, Highway 16 is divided here in the Rockerville area, and there is a lot of on-ramps, off-ramps, as well as a main street that runs through Rockerville. That is much different than any other business along Highway 16. And what I did was I, I went and looked at every single business along Highway 16, and every single one of them has an area in the median that has been paved. So traffic can access every single one of the businesses from Reptile Gardens all the way up to Cosmos by making a 90-degree turn from either direction. You can't do that here because of the fact that you have the split highway. What you have, and I'll try to point it out on this right here, is here is the access point for the subject property. It is just beyond the two Rockerville exits. Here is an on-ramp that merges from the left. Right beneath this picture here is, is the gas light. And what I'd like to explain to you is that road that comes up to the gas light right here is a fairly steep road, and you end up being parallel to the highway. And it forces traffic to essentially stop right there and assess the traffic before it moves on. At that particular location, I have my car parked here, and you can see my car is lower than, on a picture I'm showing here, my car is lower than a yield sign. I've taken a picture while I stood at their access point, and what that picture shows is I can only see the very bottom of that yield sign. When I took this picture, my wife had my car parked at that intersection. My car is parked beneath that yield sign. So this intersection cannot be seen from the access point. Or if you're at the access point, you cannot see this intersection. The concern that I have, and again, it's just created by the split highway, the concern that I have is if you're sitting, or if you're driving along here, and you already, perhaps you put in a, a lane where people can exit, a lane where people can enter, you can't see this here, and traffic's gonna be driving along 65 miles an hour, and instinctively, that traffic will move over to the passing lane. But right ahead of them, in that passing lane, is this left-hand merge. So a concern that I have is traffic will be coming along, they'll see people that are either entering or exiting here, they'll move over in the passing lane, and you just have a short distance before this point here. I'm concerned about rear-end type of accidents, I'm concerned about people not seeing motorcycles as they make those lane changes. So in my opinion, that access point is likely to cause incremental lane changes, which I, which I say puts a higher risk to the general public that is driving through this. The other comment that I would like to make off of this map is this exit point is beyond the two Rockerville exits. An option for people that want to get back to Rapid City, and I apologize for my low technology, but here's where that point is with that merging ramp. They can come down with Highway 16, and this is the main street right here that goes into Rockerville. This is a 140-degree turn. Right under, right over here after this, on this turn, is a steep embankment, there's no guard rail. That highway has no shoulders, and is only 23 feet in width. The reason I know this is because this is one avenue that I use to get to Rapid City, because I live in this subdivision, and our entrance is right here, which again is past the Rockerville exits. If you use Google, which we did, we, if you take and use Google, and you're at that entrance location, and you want to get to Rapid City, Google will tell you, come down here and make a sharp left turn. And you have very little visibility right here, and I can assure you, with 140-degree angle, a travel trailer, a fifth-wheeler, an RV cannot make that turn. And this turn here, I took a stop clock, and you only have seven seconds worth of time from the time you can see that intersection. And I looked at literature, that takes five and a half seconds to stop with constant brake pressure if you're driving 65 miles an hour. So keep in mind that you have traffic that's tearing through here at 65 miles an hour, you've got that that I just talked about, you've got that that I just talked about. This generally is not used by the public, the reason being, if you want to visit Rockerville, you've already exited, want to here, here, or here. Now, if you miss, if, excuse me, if you decide that you can't make that turn, then, and you're sitting over in here, Google is going to tell you, go all the way down and catch Silver Mountain Road, and then come back through Silver Mountain Road, come in here. So when I look at the general public, the tourists, that don't understand this whole complex, I think we create a level of risk for those people that you don't see anywhere else with the businesses that are along 16. The other point that I would make is unlike every other business along Highway 16, where you can access it with a 90-degree turn, people most likely are going to use the turnaround here and the turnaround up here to get either to Rapid City or to get to Hill City. If you're coming from Hill City, none of these exits along Highway 16 will get you to the subject property. The subject, subject property is past any ramp that can get you to this property. So if you get on Google when you're coming from Hill City, Google will tell you. So if you get on Google when you're coming from Hill City, Google will tell you, turn around right here. The reason Google does pick up that particular spot is because of strata bowl, strata bowl road. It recognizes strata bowl road, and it says, turn up here. So on both situations, unlike anywhere else, traffic will be doing one-eighties on sixteen, which I think is a higher level of risk than what you see with the other businesses. The other comment I will make, and I, I can make it with that picture that's on the wall right now, and this is mainly why I am here. There was a fatality since I moved into my subdivision, and that fatality occurred right here. There was a Rapid City woman riding a motorcycle with a helmet, she was a passenger, and there was a vehicle from Montana, wanted to exit to Rockerville, turned, made a lane change, hit the motorcycle, and she passed away. That to me is an example of the issues you're going to have, or the potential issues you're going to have with traffic making lane changes, with traffic running into that sharp left-hand turn. So from the safety standpoint of the public, I am here to just say, this, this is a high-risk area, there's no doubt about it because of all the roads. Because of that high-risk area, because of the uniqueness, I would rather see this existing property be low-density residential, which is in the long-range plan. The final comment I will make is, I believe low-density residential for this property is a great fit. The reason being, our entrance road that comes into here, this runs along a section line up here, but it doesn't here. This is where the section line was. So if I roll back the clock, a little over twenty years ago, the county had to decide, what do we do with all this acreage? And they had a proposal to zone it low-density residential. And except for this motel, which was general commercial and was already there, they took low-density residential all the way to the highway here, it goes up over across, and it ends up with a lot right over in here. So you pretty much have a U-shape, you almost surround this property because of the way the highway moves. But someone had the foresight to recognize, let's not put the road here, it would've been a straight cut, easy to put in. The reason being, this is where your merge is. So someone said, we need to move this access point past this merge. Again, over twenty years ago, and I wasn't here, the motel is the only one that I know of, but I didn't do as much research as I did with the other items that I needed to cover, this facility does not have direct access to sixteen. Someone had the foresight to put that access over here, which ended up being Pine Haven Drive. The third point that I will make is, you can see where this curved over, and it caught the corner of the subject property. I don't know if that was by accident, but I suspect not. The property owner at this point in time that elected to keep it ag, had the option of opting out and not being taxed as part of the road district. That's if state law back then was what it was now. But someone had the foresight to connect that on, onto Pine Haven Drive. So the reason I say it is such an easy fit for low-density residential, is you already have an access point established, you put some additional houses over here, residents that would be living there would understand all this mechanics, you don't need to put in any additional road, and you've got an access point already. So in summary, I think the comprehensive plan of low-density residential ultimately fits well with this, and because of the uniqueness of the property's location and the split highway, and what I consider to be the risk to the general public, I'd encourage you to not approve the recommendation to make this general commercial.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for? Not, um, next, if there are any other?
Can I?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Yes, the comprehensive plan for Pennington County shows that being low-density residential. And we've discussed before, that property sits well within the three-mile limit of Rapid City. And if you look at the comprehensive plan for Rapid City, all that property that's on highway service right now is red, and this property is red as well. So I'm just stating, you've got two comprehensive plans, you've got the county, and you've got Rapid City, and that property is designated for general commercial, if you reference Rapid City's comprehensive plan for the future, so. And there's another, you met with Mike Carlson, South Dakota DOT. And he indicated in this email, he says, the developer of the property will probably need to complete a traffic impact study to address some of your safety concerns. This will give us some idea of the impacts on his business to the traffic along Highway sixteen, and bring up some valid points, which, he brought some valid points up, and he put them in an attachment. And he says, as stated in an email to Ken Nash, developer of the property, Mr. Nash will need to apply for an access permit, which was one of the conditions, and give the development, give the department some idea of what he's planning on building, that would be the buyer, I assume. If his business causes issues with the highway severe enough to mitigate, the developer may be required to pay for those costs. So I don't know if the county wants to get into the highway business, maybe a lot of those concerns should be addressed at South Dakota DOT.
Thank you. Um, sir, did you wanna follow up on that, or you're just listening?
I, I, I will say that I, I was very appreciative of being able to talk to Mike Carlson with the DOT. I, I don't know, I, I did not look at the Rapid City plan. When you mentioned the three mile, I don't understand what the three mile aspect is of Rapid City, because this property is much greater than three miles from Rapid City, unless I am wrong with regard to where the Rapid City, city limit is. Because we're about twelve miles from Rapid City with, uh, Rockerville. But I will also tell you that, that in my discussion with Mike Carlson, the, the points that I brought out to you, he is well aware of those being issues that are gonna become of greater significance should this use change. And just to be honest with you, he dislikes this myriad and the split highway every bit as much as I do, just because it really isn't serving much use, because there hasn't been much commercial development here, which they had anticipated when they first put that in.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, just one thing. So when does the, when does the problem, when does the safety problem begin? When we rezone it, if we do, or when the developer comes out and says what he is gonna do? You can rezone that general commercial, that doesn't mean that he's gonna put something there, or they're gonna put something there that would be detrimental, because that's an un, we don't know that yet.
I, I believe the general commercial, my opinion, the general commercial would trigger access off of Highway sixteen. And again, my opinion, that access point right now is the most logical point to have an access point, because if you move it further this way, you have a bigger problem, you have less distance, stopping distance from this left-hand merge. If you move it the other direction, then you're moving it in front of the off-ramp for Rockerville.
Thank you.
Which really creates another significant hazard. So I, my, my, my opinion, and I did not get into this with, with Mike Carlson, but I think where it becomes an issue is, once you have any activity that is using an access point off of sixteen.
And that issue would be carried up with the DOT, because we do not make access points?
It's, it is, it is, it is a DOT issue, but again, to me, it also is a safety issue and a safety for our neighborhood.
For rezone.
Because we do use this road day in and day out to get to and from town.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other people like to speak? Your name, sir?
My name is Brian Johnson. My wife and I live on Pine Haven Drive. I've just got a couple small things, because I know there's others that wanna talk. Uh, I wanna start by thanking Commissioner Haddock, Commissioner Roskinick, and Commissioner LaCroix for meeting with me and Lon Buhner, who was just up here, uh, over our concerns about this rezone. Uh, I'd also like to thank Commissioner DeSanto for his vote against the rezone at the first reading. And finally, I'd like to thank Candy the Mountain for her article in the Rapid City Journal that highlighted the concerns of the neighborhood. I thought it was kind of ironic that the previous rezone, I believe Commissioner Roskinick said, if the future growth in the Black Hills, we're gonna be short on low-density residential properties, if that's what I heard you correct.
That's correct.
And here we are, talking about something that's slated to be low-density res, low-density residential, we're talking about turning that into commercial. So I thought that was a little bit ironic.
Just to rebuttal.
Oh, nope, hold on, let him finish, and then...
Anyway, that's basically all I wanted to say, and then, I thought it was also ironic that I, these are all over the chairs, these cards in it, and it says, Pennington County Comprehensive Plan. And it says, my opinion matters. So I'm hoping that my opinion matters, and I'm hoping my neighbor's opinion matters too, because we would like to see you, you vote to deny this request.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Roskinick, please.
Also, I believe Mr. Andrew Bus with the helicopters, he clearly stated that anything fronting Highway sixteen A in front of his helicopter business was highway service or general commercial. So this is where I have a hard time making a decision, because he got roughly fifteen-hundred feet of highway frontage to Highway sixteen, and I don't know that I'd wanna build a five or six-hundred thousand dollar house on Highway sixteen. And I think that's why you don't see any residential development on that parcel, because your homes are set off of that. So it's just, if you look at the corridor between Mount, or Mount Rushmore and Rapid City, you don't see, most of your commercial properties are taking advantage of that highway frontage. That's a tough situation if that thing, that that lot was split right in half, it'd be very easy to, for me to vote, but, uh, right now, you know, it's, you're right, it's got some residential overtones, but it also has a lot of commercial overtone.
There are some properties that are close to the highway there, I, I know, I think we pointed those out to you the other day when you met with us. So I, and I can understand it's a tough decision, but I hope you'll, I hope you'll vote with the homeowners that don't want this, so.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next applicant?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Greg Erlinson, I'm a lawyer at Bangs McCullin Law Firm. I've recently been retained by the homeowners that you see here today, to assist and advise them going forward if necessary. I think a lot of the points have been made, it's been a long day, you've got a lot on your plate, and I'm not gonna restate a bunch of this stuff. I would like to introduce, though, Bill Hearn, who would like to, to make those points, and I appreciate the Commissioners for their time, and respectfully urge that you deny the request to rezone.
Thank you.
Well, hello, been a long day for y'all. He didn't get a break or nothing. I'm, I'm Bill Hearn, I'm, I'm one of the property owners, but I'm also the president of the Pine Haven Road District, so I kinda wear two hats here. Wanna clarify a couple of things. The, the current owners indicated that they had approached the homeowners about buying the property, no, nobody ever approached me. And my property, is there a pointer here someplace, or how's this work? This point?
Yes. Brittany, could you help him with the pointer, please?
Oh, now it works. Okay, cool. All right, protect. Uh, my, my property is right along here, I guess this doesn't write right there. And, but they never approached me, and when Merv and Phyllis purcha, or entered into the purchase agreement of the buffer zone, which is kind of a designer or defensive mechanism, I, I thought, well, maybe I should, I would like to do that also. I left a message on Friday, and a message on Sunday with the proposed buyer, saying that I'd like to also have, if this went commercial, have some kind of a buffer that I could purchase, but I never received any communication back from them. The issue of homes being close to sixteen, well, my lot, right here, you know, is right along that, as are the ones up here, are very close to sixteen already. There's another home that's over to the west that doesn't show on this map, that's even, that's similar to mine, that comes right down to the highway. So there is certainly a number of homes that are along Highway sixteen there. But, you know, certainly this issue has, has generated a, a lot of controversy in the neighborhood, and there's a high level of animosity, and I'm not sure that's gonna go away real easy. You know, little has changed in the comprehensive plan since the plan was produced. The goal of the plan is to achieve long, long-term strategic goals for the betterment of the county and its residents. Often there are pressures to make expeditious incremental decisions that when reviewed in hindsight produce a poorer result than a deliberative planning process. I believe that what's going on currently is sort of an example of that incremental decision-making. Personally, I always strive to have all-win solutions so that everybody is satisfied, and encourage you to do so also, and I think there's an opportunity here to have an all-win solution. In August, the seller made an offer to one of the homeowners to purchase Lot One in total. That purchase price was just too large for him personally to invest. In the last ten days, I've been trying to put together a group to buy the property. I couldn't quite get that done in ten days, but I've raised eighty-one percent of the funds needed to do that, and I believe that if I continue working, I'll be successful in raising the money necessarily to buy the property. If the property was low-density residential with six lots being built, which would all be a little over three acres apiece, and it was built, and the homes that were built there were just the average price of the homes that currently border the property, the assessed value of that parcel would be three-point-eight million dollars. My guess is that when they do a commercial development there, it won't even be half of that, and, you know, part of y'all's job is to be good stewards of funds, and part of that is to kind of raise tax bases as much as you can, and low-density commercial, I think, would maximize that tax base. So how would this be all-win? Well, if the fundraising activity was successful, the sellers would achieve their proposed price that they want, and with a quick close, and we wouldn't have all these meetings and friction that's going on. Tension and animosity in the neighborhood is alleviated, and folks would return to the quiet enjoyment of the homes. The homeowners that are joining Lot One would, would then know that the use of that is gonna be compatible with their existing homes, and consistent with what was in the comprehensive plan, which they may have used, or what I used anyway, when I purchased my property. And even the Pine Haven Road District, of which I'm president, would gain, because we'd have a larger tax base, we'd have a little bit more money to maintain the road. And the county would win, because you potentially stay out of court, you'd have satisfied cit, custo, or citizens, and a higher assessed tax base forever, thus increasing county revenues. That's good stewardship. You know, I really feel like this whole deal, we've been trying to pound a square peg in a round hole, and we're can, you know, making exceptions and modifications and doing things differently to make that fit, when in fact it just doesn't fit. But you have before you an opportunity for an all-win solution, I encourage you not to let it slip away, just continue with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Any other applicants like to speak today? If not, board discussion, motion?
I would make a motion to deny the rezone.
There a second for denial? There a second? All right, fails for a second. Do we have discussion? It fails for a second. Do we have discussion or motion? Okay, I'll speak. Two things. This property's been going on for a while, because we had, and maybe Cassie or Brittany know, when did we come up, and when did they come up, and Mr. Prankarats or Mr. Nash want to sell this property, and they were going to put general commercial where the billboard was going to be? How many months ago was that? Do we have that?
Eleven.
Before the new Commissioners, am I correct? And then, we've been going through this for, I don't know how long as well, at least a month. And now, we never heard about anybody buying the property or wanting to buy the property at that point, when we're going to do it general commercial, if I'm correct. And now, we have someone after Ross, Mr. Roskinick, and the neighbors, some of the neighbors, came up with a solution. And now, we have someone else, the day of, instead of sending us an email, maybe there was some work being done at buying the property, and that he had 81% of the homeowners. Not that that is a bad thing, but Mr. Nash doesn't know anything about it. I would think if this was going through, if this was something that was serious, Mr. Nash would have came up and said, you know, let's just continue this. We have a, we might have a home buy. So a little bit disingenuous of the man that's coming up now and saying he has homeowners, maybe 81%, and the only one that knows at this point is him, because your Commissioner doesn't know, and your homeowner, or your property owner doesn't know. So number two, future land use in those districts, if you look, if we, do we have another map that shows from Rapid City all the way through almost to this property, it's highway service? Those corridors come from general commercial to highway service in a lot of those areas. And I was on future land use for seven years with the city, and it always had a buffer on major arterials or highways with highway service or commercial. It's just what they did, because of complaints later, or there might be complaints later, because low density is right next to the highway, that we need to start doing something about that, putting low density next to it. So a lot of times, in future land use, you always put highway service or basically commercial next to arterials, and then there's usually a buffer of medium density and then low density, at least in the city. Here, it looks like we do highway service, and then we have buffers of a little bit of everything. And not always is that good planning, but we do it because we believe in property rights in the county. So in this case, the whole district in that area is highway service or commercial. And it doesn't make sense to me to at least put some general commercial, maybe not 20 acres, I don't know. But this property, this is a second reading, this property, and Commissioner Roskinick has said, it hasn't been sold yet. And at this point, if you want to buy that property, it can still go forward. If you decide, Mr. Hearn, if you're going to buy that property and do it at 80, and end up buying that property, then it's a general commercial at that point, you can come back and rezone, say, I bought it, it's going to stay this. So there's no, there's no, that, there's no way that you can just say, or I don't know if that's the word, I'm getting tired. Bottom line is, you can still purchase that property from Mr. Nash. If he calls us and tells us, which it seems like he would already, if you're going to buy it, that it doesn't need to be commercial anymore, someone has bought it, and it can stay like it is, that would already happen, it seemed like. So for me, I believe you need a buffer before, general commercial, before you hit low density. I'm going to hope anybody who buys that property would put some type of buffer on that, at least away from the houses that were already built there. Those aren't small houses. People have spent money for that in respect. There will be a 25-foot setback, of course, no matter what. So if he, one of the men had said they wanted to buy some of the property, so he has a buffer. There will also be a 25-foot buffer off of that property there, so I don't know how far that brings that property in, but I don't see somebody coming way back into that low-density building, the property. Buying something that I've seen so far that has been contiguous with basically commercial or highway service for people that need stuff for tourism, that they went that far back. So for me, I think it makes sense. I would do it more, I guess, highway service, but it looks like when you're looking at the rezone, highway service and general commercial look kind of the same. So the solution, I like buffers, but I also believe in property rights. And if you want a buffer, I think the one gentleman did it right. I don't, okay, I'm going to say this, and hopefully it doesn't ruin your deal. I don't know if you needed to buy that big a buffer, because you're still going to have 25 feet, but from whatever they build. But I don't know what the solution is. We like to, I like to make both sides happy in one sense, but it's not happening. Roskinick did a lot of work to try to get that done. And it seems like now, on the 10th hour, the last minute, we have another guy. So I don't know what to do at this point.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner La Croix first, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not, you know, I struggled with this when it first come on and got continued. Whether to go, and I struggled for the, for the motion that was presented, because I'm still not there. I'm waiting to hear some more stuff. But I can tell you where I'm at on this, is I met with the property owners, I did the tour on Friday. I understand both sides, and I explained at that point two same things. That's why I asked Mr. Nash about that access, because that was one of the biggest things for me. And that was for an emergency access. You know, the rezoning seems to be the big issue. You know, first it was the roadistic, now, now all of a sudden, when that was taken care of, just now it's the zoning. And then I find out there's some more stuff going on with this property, selling this and that. So I think there's a lot more to this than I'm even aware of, quite frankly. And when I see another lawyer in the office, I see that. There's something else going on with the property, and we've seen this with the buying. Now, in my decision, I don't care. You know, what's the best fit for this area? What are the concerns? And Lon, I mean, you made some darn right good points. And you also made some points, Rockerville shouldn't be there. You know, if you go by those points, by those exits, you shouldn't have those, those going on. These are just my opinions. I'm still struggling at this point, but something's going on. One of the biggest factors that came out today, traffic study. Before any other development goes on, there's got to be a traffic study. So although I respect all the work Lon did, you're a heck of a presenter, you must have done that for a living, because you had everything lined up. You still, there's still a traffic study, and I explained that during the meeting, that that has to be done before, you got to know what the use is. So I just wanted to explain that I understand what's going on here, but I'm still teeter-totting either way. I'd like to hear some more discussion and then a motion, I guess.
Thank you. I'm going to let the board speak, sir, then I'll let you speak. Commissioner DeSanto, please.
I just want to point out that just because something is highway service, doesn't mean that we need to build there. There, if you have highway service, and it's on a corner, and it presents a danger, then we don't need to give permission to somebody to build there and create further danger. And so it seems like some of, some of the discussion is leaning towards, well, it's already highway service. Well, to me, that doesn't make any difference at all. It's a matter of, is whatever's going to be put there appropriate to be put there? And will it present a safety issue or not? You know, the other thing that we got to take into consideration, this throwing another, muddying up the waters even more, is we have no idea what's going to happen with the pearly pit. And if they start, they resume business up there and start moving trucks down the road, then that's one more traffic hazard that's going to be in place. 90 to 150 trucks a day running up and down that highway, and we don't know which direction they're going to go. They could go to Rapid, or they can go the other direction. So there, to me, it just, there's too much at risk. And that's why I'm, that's why I've stuck with where, what I said in the first place. I've driven all over that place up there and looked around, and I just don't feel that that's an appropriate usage of that, of that property. Leaving billboards there, that's fine, but not having in and out, in and out, that doesn't work for me.
Thank you. Any other board discussion before Mr. Hearn speaks? If not, Mr. Hearn?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention a couple of things there. You referred to me as being disingenuous, and I got to admit, that's offensive. I think it deals with my personal integrity, which I have a problem with. As far as trying to develop another purchase agreement, I approached Ken Nash at the previous commission meeting and asked him if he would, if they would entertain a backup offer for the property. He indicated that they would. I told him that I would go to work to try to raise money to provide that backup offer. I was unsuccessful in getting 100%, but I'm close. You know, I had 10 days to do it, so several of the people I need to visit with are out of town, some of them are out of the country. But, and as a legal standpoint, you know, they could not accept another purchase agreement, you know, while there's already one in place, okay? So that's not an option. It would be strictly a backup agreement. But I wanted to let them know that, you know, it's trying to have an all-win solution, that trying to come up with funds that we could develop low-density residential, and they would still meet their desired price point.
I appreciate that. Mr. Hearn and I, I apologize, because I did not, and I'm going to say, I didn't know all the facts, because I did not know that you had tried to purchase it before. It just looked like to me, I never heard of it before, and then all of a sudden, I did. So I apologize for that, because I thought you just came out and said, okay, now I've got it 81%, and now I want to go forward. And Mr. Ron didn't know, or Commissioner Ron Roskinick didn't know or anything, and I thought, okay, now he's just throwing that out there. So it looked like it at the time, until you just filled me in with that information, so I will apologize for my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to have board discussion, sir, okay? Let us, let us finish. Do we have a motion on the floor, please, and then we'll have more discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I would move approval of the rezone.
Is there a second?
I'm going to have a substitute.
Substitute?
This is a compromise. I would, my substitute would be to rezone that to highway service opposed to general commercial.
Cassie is, oh, is there a second? I'll second for discussion. Cassie, do we have to deny without prejudice for them to change that? Or can we do that today, is make it highway service instead of general commercial?
Cassie Posted, Assistant Planning Director, I think the cleanest way to do it, more than likely, is to deny without prejudice, have them reapply, because the cleanest way is to have them re-advertise that that's what they're, that's what they're looking for, is highway service.
So would you like to change your motion, Commissioner?
My motion would be to deny, deny without prejudice and let them come back and do the highway service.
I'll second that motion. Discussion. Commissioner, just one thing. Mr. Hearn said he was going to try and get this property, and I think that gives him more time to figure out with denying without prejudice before this even goes through. So if we denied without prejudice, they'd have to come back with a first and a second reading, Cassie? That would give Mr. Hearn time to see if he could purchase his property by that time. And I think that would be more than fair to both sides, to see if that would move forward. So just a thing to move forward. Okay, we have a deny without prejudice motion on the floor. Any other discussion?
Can I ask Mr. Nash a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nash, would you come forward, please? You've heard the motion that's on the floor.
Yes.
I know that you're not the property owner, per se, but is that something that would be of interest to you or the property owner to come back and ask for that rezone, to change it from the commercial to the?
I would have to come back and ask for highway service, yes.
It would be of interest to you. Okay? Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Board, and thank you all for discussion. I'm glad we got all the information out. Hopefully, that gives both sides a chance to move forward. All right, thank you. Item G, approval of annual MS4 stormwater report and stormwater management plan.
Good morning, Brittany Maliter, again. As part of our stormwater plan, we have to submit an annual report every year to the state, DENR, the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. In order to submit this report to DENR, it does have to be signed by a public official. Part of our stormwater program, most of it applies to the Rapid Valley area. There are some areas along Universal Drive and then Colonial Pine Hills off of Sheridan Lake Road, but like I said, the majority of it is in the Rapid Valley area. As part of this, we do have the construction permit requirements for land disturbances. As part of our stormwater plan, we have labeling storm drains. Like I said, most of those are in the Rapid Valley area, and some other things that we have to do to stay in compliance with our plan. So this is just the report that we submit every year to the state in regards to our stormwater plan. Last summer was pretty, a pretty wet summer, so there was probably a lot of stormwater issues, more flooding issues and things, because there was a lot. We do have some dry weather screening and things as part of this plan that we didn't do last year, because of, everything was wet already. So I'm just asking that the board approve, and the chair signature on submitting of the report to the state.
Do we have a motion?
To approve.
I'll second.
Motion by DeSanto, second by Roskinick. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion.
Thank you.
Gary. Items from Chair and Commissioner Menvers.
Madam Chair.
Sorry, Commissioner La Croix.
Thank you. I know you guys probably are going to get, Debbie probably are going to get tired of hearing this. The next meeting, I'd like to bring up, I'll come up with the information of everybody, it looks like they're willing to discuss it, but I'd like to have discussion on speaker request forms again. I don't think we really had one before, but I'd like to have one.
I think it'd be a good discussion. Commissioner La Croix, it's a lot easier to see who's coming up, and then they can...
I just wanted to bring it up in the whole group here, so it doesn't show, it doesn't show up on Thursday's agenda, and you're thinking, who's doing this, what, this way, you got two weeks to think about it. But I'd like to bring, put it on the next agenda.
Good point. Commissioners, we are looking at what we want to do to move forward on hard rock mining. Holly has sent some suggestions, talked to some of the Commissioners. Holly has too. We're just trying to figure out what's next. We don't know at this point, if I'm right, Ms. Holly, what's and how we're moving forward with it, but we are looking at also, we haven't got that decision from Troll and that issue. So we're looking at more, at putting it past that decision time, unless somebody has a heartache or something and needs to move that forward quicker. So just, just the informational only. Commissioner La Croix.
Can I remark on that? I just wanted to say, thank you for bringing that up, but I had a conversation with, I'd also want to thank Mr. Roskinick for volunteering.
I'm Ron Roskinick.
That's where the speaker request form come up again, because in our conversation, we were talking about that, and that's why I thought it'd be, it's probably a good time to bring it back forward again.
And we don't, we don't have to make, we don't have to make a motion, but it sounds like Ron would like to run, be the chair of that, and a non-voting member in that chair and that, but we have not decided that yet, but it's just a suggestion. But I know I'm okay with that. I've done a few ordinances, and I've... I've, I've done a few ordinances and I've gotten my feet wet from it, so it's kinda nice to have someone else doing it. Committee reports. Commissioner LaCroy first.
Um, I forgot my book at home with the notes, but I did send out, uh, the email that they did, the article on, uh, the Black, the National Forest Meeting that we had and what's, and some of the stuff that's going on with the mining. So hopefully you guys were able to go through that. We did attend, uh, Community Health Board meeting. I was late and Mr. Roskinek was there and there's some good stuff going on there. The mental health side's about ready to open up, I believe he said, in April sometime.
Correct. An additional three thousand square feet.
Yeah. And the good thing about that, that the mental health wing to the public health wa, was a vision fund, uh, funded project and they came in a hundred and forty thousand dollars under budget when they did that. And that has a lot to do with one particular person's services. We'll probably recognize him at another time and date, but he's, he's really good at getting that done. The other thing that I've been on is, uh, the MacArthur Grant. I sat down with Liz a while back for about an hour and a half, two hours. I mean, Holly got tired of us listening to us talk and shut the doors on us, so. So it was a pretty long meeting, trying to catch up on, on a lot of the stuff that the MacArthur's doing and they're gonna start going to monthly meetings here. They were going like quarterly or something like that, but some of the, there's some more funding that's available and they're, uh, gonna start meeting monthly to give more updates and so forth. So, um...
And thank you, Lloyd, for volunteering, for being on that committee. I know you're already on a bunch of committees besides the six we are here and we appreciate that.
Yeah, that worked out really good, seeing Liz. I was on, worked with Liz on the, the original J D A I startup. And this is kinda where the MacArthur, I'm still catching up to speed because there's a lot that's happened and, and it's gonna take a while to catch up to speed what's going on, but, uh, otherwise, you know, I, like I said, I forgot my notes, so that's about it.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Commissioner DeSanto.
Uh, attended the emergency management meeting. Um, focused a lot on hazmat detox. Deb was there as well. Uh, they were coming up with some ideas on how to do dry detox as opposed to wet detox so that it would contain, um, the, the runoff of hazardous materials when you're washing it off of a person or a piece of equipment or something like that. They came up, they, they had a presentation of some gloves that can be used to wipe someone down and the gloves are a combination of, of cotton material, polyester material, and a, and a carbon matter to attract the, the, uh, different hazmat, uh, I guess toxins that could be on somebody's body. It also makes, seem to make a lot of sense when it comes to the types of weather that we've had lately. They can set up the tent, they can warm the water, they can, but this would be a much quicker, more efficient way in, in cold, cold weather to get rid of a, of a possible poisoning situation or that. Also, we, I found out, I didn't know, and it, and it sounded like there were several agencies that didn't know about a, uh, seemed like it's just basically a walk-through trailer that Ellsworth has that is willing to loan to any of our emergency management department or our emergency departments, um, for detox. And, and it can, um, clean an amazing number of people in a very short period of time if there's a large spill or something that people are, um, exposed with that. So we've got that as a, as an option as well. And then I also attended the Black Hills Energy Tour and Presentation. One of the things that came up that, that I think that they're gonna be focusing on more in the future is talking to counties and cities about the possibilities of purchasing energy through alternative energy sources, through Black Hills Energy. So, once we start, uh, being able to obtain more wind, wind energy electrons, we will be able to possibly get together with Black Hills Energy, set up a, a purchase plan to purchase those particular types of, of energy sources, um, that could possibly save us some money in the long run because I believe, and don't quote me, but I believe there's gonna be some pretty significant federal grants and stuff like that if you're using those types of alternative energy sources to, uh, to generate power for your, uh, entities. So that was a super interesting, and that, that facility up there is absolutely amazing and incredibly efficient, incredibly efficient. Most, all of their, their heat is generated through, I, I believe they're, um, similar to a heat pump. And then even the machinery that they use for printing, the computers, everything else, all that heat that's put off from that machinery is circulated back through the building to provide, uh, their heating source. So it's just really, really quite an incredible setup up there. So, anyway, that's what I've got.
Thank you, that was a good information. Commissioner Roskinek.
Uh, well, I attended, uh, the building committee. I believe, uh, Gary was there with me. And one of the things that we discussed was, uh, the two major projects that are going on right now is the upper level of the care campus, which will house sixty-four, uh, beds. I think anywhere from one to six months would be the normal stay. That's a little bit behind us, behind schedule because of the adverse weather. A lot of the stuff that they do, uh, have concrete saws that take water, so they're a little bit behind schedule and, and it didn't sound like we were gonna have to, uh, there wouldn't be any penalties, at least for now, for the delay caused by the weather. Another item that we talked about is we got the facility on LaCrosse Street. And, uh, you know, sooner or later, we're gonna have to decide what we're gonna do with that on a long-term basis. So, we're looking at options to, uh, look that building, uh, if we wanna sell it or just looking at the different alternatives, what would be best for the taxpayers. Then I attended my first, uh, community health and, uh, I'm glad Lloyd came in at the end because that was all foreign to me. I, my main re, I can't go to the next meeting, but the reason I wanted to go to this one so that I could meet, uh, the board members. And so we got to meet all the board members and they know who I am, I know who they are, or most of them. And learning the dynamics of that facility and, and what they do, that's gonna take more than one meeting. But, uh, anyhow, I got an icebreaker. And the last one was a, a compensation committee, which, uh, Gary was all, also there. And we're just, uh, working on that final draft and, uh, different techniques and methods for, uh, steps and, and salaries. So, I'm learning.
Job, you've been doing a lot of research on a lot of things, Commissioner Roskinek. Um, we appreciate a lot of your extra information that you give us, um, from your experience from a lot of things, your appraisal and stuff that, um, has been valuable to us. So, um, we appreciate all the extra information that you're giving us. You do a lot of extra work for us, so we appreciate that.
Glad to be of service to my county.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good thing we don't have to pay him by the hour. I have, I have nothing else. Madam Chair.
Thank you. For me, it was L A P C, same with Commissioner DeSanto. He is the alternative on the, on the L A P C, um, but we determined that the other day. Actually, I did, and I did tell them. But two of us is always good. And, uh, I'm glad you, um, brought all that information forward because that was pretty awesome. And just that they're gonna have some hazmat, uh, presentations and, and demonstrations that the community can be involved in as well, that should go out on our county website. And then the Black Hills National Forest Update, that was very good with Scott and, and the people that we visit with, with Mead County, Custer County, and Lawrence County. Very informational and I did give out Commissioner LaCroy's, uh, phone number to everybody. I just told, for the Black Hills National Forest Update, 'cause you are a liaison in this area and they didn't know that. And, uh, I did say many good things about you. And that number two, it was a lot of stuff on U T Vs, A T Vs, you know, different areas in the Forest Service. That was a big issue, some mining and some other things, but very informational, so it was good. On that note, um, any other information? Commissioner DeSanto.
I did forget one thing, uh, I think you remember me asking. They, they are having, uh, Emergency Management is having a Stop the Bleed.
Yes.
It's basically a seminar class. Uh, it's gonna be from one to two P M. in the E O C. on April sixteenth. So anybody that wants to attend that, it's come and attend it. And, um, it's a good program to, for first responders to save somebody's life.
Thank you, Commissioner DeSanto. Good information from you today.
Madam Chair. I wanna, I wanna thank Joe and his staff at the Highway Department because last week I had a constituent call, uh, lived up by Deerfield, off of Deerfield Road on Prospect Mountain or Prospect Road. And he said, real lively, snowed in. He said, there's some elderly's up here and we have plows. We've tried to hire a contractor with the Bobcat, we can't get out. So I called Mark with the, uh, D O T. and, and, uh, I got a text about four hours later from this gentleman and he said, I just, I wanna offer my sincere thanks to Mark and, and Cody, uh, what, that serves that Hill City District. He said, for their quick response, they come up with the Bobcat with the snow blower. It was basically an emergency situation and all I had to do is make that one phone call to, uh, the Highway Department. I gave him this gentleman's telephone number and I got a thank you text. And so I wanna take time to personally say thank you, Mark, and thank you, Joe. I think you guys are doing an excellent job.
Thank you. I think we seen today, uh, many of our staff that we can thank for their hard work. We went through Janet in her office today and some highway stuff and, um, Jay and, and Shannon, X, okay, I won't say, I won't call him Janet again, Shannon, um, that they just work very hard for us. We have Joan and Holly in our office and I can tell you, without Holly and Joan, a lot of us wouldn't get things done. So, a lot of appreciation from this board. Um, and I've seen it over and over again, just in the last couple of months, about how hard our, our staff works and how much they've been in assistance to, um, this commission. So thank you, staff and people from our county that really make a difference for not only the commission but for our community, so. Number twenty-one, twenty nineteen legislative session. Update on proposed bill session activity. Number one, revise H B one-one-three-two, revise certain provisions regarding the treatment of alcohol and drug abuse. Gary, is this you?
Madam Chair.
Yes? We'll do Gary first and then Jay.
Well...
Or Commissioner Drews?
Commissioner Drews knows the status of it.
I do.
Okay.
I do. Thanks to Holly. The, uh, towards the end of the legislative session, things can get a little crazy. And so, um, House Bill eleven thirty-two is one of those that was introduced with a, uh, different subject matter actually in the bill. And it was obviously not going anyplace. And so one of the representatives, in fact, Speaker Haugard, uh, took the, uh, position to, uh, revive the bill, uh, amend everything out of it that was in it and put all new language in it, which is then referred to as a hog house. And I first became aware of this because of, uh, our chairman of the Pennington County Board of Mental Illness, Greg Barner, uh, brought it to my attention. And it was, in a, in the form that it was hog housed, it basically said that, uh, it was gonna create an unfunded mandate on counties by combining the chemical dependency involuntary commitment process with the Board of Mental Illness, essentially taking away from courts, putting it over to mental illness, uh, which would make it our financial obligation. And so, uh, made contact with the, uh, with Senate Judiciary Committee, which had, which was having a hearing on it yesterday and, uh, and received some very positive comments back from those members indicating that they were going to be voting no on it. Uh, well, the latest word is, is that as of this morning, Speaker Haugard, uh, did table the bill himself. Uh, but he did indicate in his testimony that he wanted to have continued discussion prior to the next session with counties, boards of mental illness, and sheriffs to address his concerns. And so this is something that we're gonna need to be working on in the meantime as to, uh, again, try to avoid, uh, putting additional responsibility on counties uh, where this really probably should not be our financial responsibility. But obviously, there's issues, uh, at the state level on it at this point in time too. So, uh, we'll need to continue to work on that. And then probably the other main thing, and Jay, you're welcome to come and speak on that too.
Not to reiterate everything that was just mentioned, it's just, uh, I've been very involved in the mental health committee. Jay Aldrin with State's Attorney's Office. Uh, I've just, I've had a lot of experience with the Mental Illness Board and the mental, uh, commitment process. And our office also handles what they call the I V Cs, the involuntary commitments for drug and alcohol. And they're two separate jurisdictions entirely. The drug and alcohol go to court. All the paperwork's filed with the clerk of court, a judge in the circuit court hears the case. Our office goes over if there may be a, a contest to whether treatment will be, um, agreed to and have to be ordered. Most of those cases end up with the, uh, individual agreeing they need treatment and there's no further hearings. Uh, the, the county, of course, is not paying U J S. for the judge's time or the courtroom, uh, or the utilities or, uh, the filings. Um, that's all handled through U J S. and that system. The Mental Illness Board is an entirely different thing. That's a county jurisdiction. That's Greg Barner's, our board chair. And those are held over at, uh, the Behavioral Health Center, Regional West Hospital. We pay the board to sit and it's a three-member board, not a one, not one judge. So we pay that board to sit, we pay the board chair to handle the paperwork. It's all, all the paperwork's filed in our office. Two entirely separate things. And so as Commissioner Drews was pointing out, the, uh, the initial language of this, this bill at least would essentially transfer a hundred percent of that jurisdiction to the Mental Illness Board, which naturally becomes a total, uh, compensation package for the county to inherit. And, um, we'd probably have to be looking for a different space, um, to conduct the hearings, additional equipment, recording equipment to, uh, transcribe the proceedings. Uh, and then there's a number of other things that were involved in that language that looked like it would actually create additional hearings that today aren't required in the drug and alcohol commitment. That language looked like it was gonna create additional hearings, which would mean additional time for our board to meet and we would be responsible for those costs. So there was just, um, a lot of issues at the eleventh hour that people started to see and started to speak out about. And so I'm glad that it didn't go through in its current form. And by all means, um, be interesting to understand why there was a push or a need to transfer that jurisdiction. Uh, 'cause I hadn't heard the justification for that at any, at any point just yet. So, uh, to the extent we can be helpful and vet that, uh, over the course of the next year, that would be great. Maybe it ends up in some compromise, maybe it doesn't happen. But right now, in that curtain form, I'm glad it was pulled.
Absolutely. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, Gary and Jay, for all your work on that information.
The one other thing that I do have relative to legislation is that, um, we had talked earlier about, uh, uh, North Dakota experienced the huge cost last year because of the protests up there because of the, uh, Trans Canada pipeline going through. Uh, concern obviously expressed in South Dakota as to what kind of position we might all be in with it, with the pipeline coming through the state under similar circumstances. And currently, uh, as by law, the, each county where it would go through, uh, could be liable up to two mills. Two mills for Pennington County is about seventeen and a half million dollars. So, uh, there was a, an attempt to get a, uh, bill through the legislature which would lower that to like a half mill, which it'll leave at about four million. But the governor has now stepped in and she's introduced a, uh, or had a pair of bills introduced, uh, to try to change the picture of all this, uh, relative to protests. And basically what she's suggesting is follow the money. For instance, in North Dakota, they know that m, most of the cost for those protests, uh, was provided by others out of state, had nothing to do with, uh, the actual pipelines that were... were coming through and the position that they were. And so what she's suggesting is follow the money, figure out a way of cutting off the money source, which would reduce those types of protests. It wouldn't stop, you know, friendly protests, but it would stop the effort that took place like in North Dakota is what the intent is being on. So hopefully, that will go someplace where it will reduce any costs that any counties may have in the future on that.
Any other follow-up?
Perfect.
Any other discussion, Board?
I forgot one thing.
Commissioner LaCroy.
For just the report part of it, the Planning Commission is starting their work on the comprehensive plan stuff and I think they made it as far as number three, so it's coming for us.
We've got a little piece in there, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Number 22 is the vouchers, $266,430.36.
Move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto, second by LaCroy. Any other discussion? Not? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. 23 is items from the public. Sir? Your name, sir?
My name is Brad Naimel. I live out on School Drive and as many of you know, there's quite a drainage problem out in that area because of all the rain we've been having this year. And so I went to a couple of the landowners down the street where there is the drainage by the feed store there that they couldn't get access, an easement access to that drainage when they did the road ditch out there. Talked to both of the landowner and the property management company of the property next door. She gave me the landowner's name that owns the little house there by the feed store and they both said they would easily give the county access to that, to that drainage so that they could do that road ditch deeper because they both are having terrible troubles with their, the house has a sump pump in the basement or in the crawl space that runs all the time and they said they would gladly have given easement to do a better drainage there, to do some kind of storm drain on the other side of the road to try and get that water out of there faster and better. So I just wanted to bring that up and I wanted to talk about the stormwater thing when it was up, but it went through kind of fast. I had a state inspector come out and inspect my property there on School Drive to find out what he wanted, what he thought of the situation. And it doesn't appear to me that the state, DENR, and Pennington County Planning and Zoning are anywhere closer on the same page with that stormwater protection. So I'd just like to bring that up to the commission and ask them to look into that and see why there's such a difference because we discussed me getting a permit from the state to use state inspectors to come out and inspect my property because the ideas are so much different on how to control that stormwater. So I just wanted to bring up those two things and thank you guys for your help.
Thank you, sir. Number 24 is executive session. Do we have a motion to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2-1 for the purpose of discussing personal matter in pursuit to SDCL 1-25-2-3 for the purpose of consulting with legal counsel regarding contractual matter?
That would be my motion.
Motion by DeSanto, second by Drews. Any others discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto, second by LaCroy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. First motion?
Move to award a performance step to IT Director Laurie Wagner, grade 24, step 12 to 7,406.39 effective starting April 2019 pay period.
Motion by LaCroy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next motion, please.
Motion to approve the chair's signature on the right-of-way acquisition for partial number 45, the amount of $24,647.44 and approval of an additional approach.
We have a motion by DeSanto, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by LaCroy, second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned.